And costing them hardly anything. Uh, and at, at the same time, they're not going to have college debt. For this project should be built by a skilled and trained workforce. Um, where carpenters uh with where carpenters and building tradesmen or women earn a livable wage, have benefits for the carpenter and his or her immediate family. They, they will, they're not a drain on the community. In fact, they provide community wealth. We build better, we're educated, we work safe. These men and women and graduates would be able to stay and reside in the city of Westminster and keep their hardworking money in their city. And last, this project, if it's going to be built, should be built by qualified and responsible contractors who participate in a state certified apprenticeship and helmets to hard hat program. I, I, I want to stress this because, you know, this project in your city will provide a numerous jobs, numerous good paying jobs to your residents with local hire veterans and hiring from local high schools. This is a no brainer to me. And we are urging the councilman, mayor and, and the council members to speak to Sheldon Development and find out who are they going to use to build the new civic center? Thank you for your time. Have a good evening and I will remain on the rest of the uh for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez for participating in the meeting. I really appreciate your comment. So do we have any other speaker?
Yes, yes. So next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. This is Jody Boyd, resident of Westminster. And I would like to echo and applaud Mr. Gomez's previous comments. I could not be in agreement more. The second thing I'd like to speak about is agenda item five point two. I would like to ask that that item not be heard this evening. Uh considerably more thought needs to go into that. It was quite a surprise to many of us who do live and do business here on the west side to learn that there was one point one million dollars that had been set aside a couple of years ago for economic improvement and nothing was ever done. Um, this is one area where we residents could have really um rolled up our sleeves and helped champion um this program instead. I feel that there was a complete lack of communication and transparency and it's not fair to completely take away these funds. Also, I'm not in favor of setting up a loan program for small businesses from the city's money. Uh, the economic impact of COVID one nine is going to go on for years. So giving a small business twenty thousand dollars now is really just a Band-Aid. And it's not very likely that they will still be in business. As Terry Rain said, there are other bigger and better programs for them. And I just feel that we're taking way too big of a risk with city money that we really don't have to lend out. And the proposal is very vague. It, I know that payments are deferred for up to twelve months, but does that mean that the interest is deferred as well? Uh, and most on the free market, most small business loans today are in the range of three to three point two five percent. So I think we really need to table this agenda item, perhaps wait until we have an economic consultant onboard. So we have a better idea and more professional input on what to do and what is best for the entire city. If I had a one point one million dollars to give away, I would buy gift cards from small businesses in need and redistribute them to residents in need. That way it would be a win-win. Third, I have submitted to um the city attorney. I'm very disappointed. It has not yet been discussed. So I will bring it out in the open. I am calling for the removal of Al Hamadeh from our personnel board. He was appointed in January two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Hamadeh, who I am familiar with, was previously in two thousand seventeen. He ran for city council in um the city of Compton, having perjured himself in writing on documents which I have turned over to the city attorney, where he had in his own handwriting changed his address uh and um register voter's registration to an address in Compton that turned out to be nothing more than a rundown trailer park and a very rundown camper sitting on a litter and weed strown lot. I don't feel that Mr. Hamadeh has previously demonstrated the ethics that we require of our city council commissions and board members. So I am calling for his immediate removal. That's it, folks. Thank you.
All right, uh, city club, do we have any other speaker before I close oral communication?
Uh, yes, we have a, and I apologize if I mispronounce this, but a Kessia, Kessia H. Hi, are you with us?
Yes, hello.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Um, well, this is my first time actually attending one of these meetings and I have lived here for over twenty years. Um, I want to, I did miss the first part as I was trying to navigate getting online um about the, what you guys are doing as far as the COVID situation. Um, as of today, Orange County has only had seventy seven supposed deaths from the Corona flu. Additionally, the flu season is over. When we first agreed to stay at home, it was to not overwhelm the help system, the health system and the hospitals. That mission has been accomplished. As the original model proved to be false, the uh, the people that have entrusted you guys to office are and thought you would put our best interest um first as to the community as well as to everyone else. So we are wanting you to open up the city. Um, as our governor is, his phases are unconstitutional for one, but they're also unrealistic and the people of your community, of our community are losing revenue, losing so much. And so I'm encouraging you guys to do the right thing and open. Thank you.
Thank you so much. City club, any uh, any speaker, any other speaker?
Yes, I have Camilla Overbeek.
Okay.
Camilla, are you with us?
Yes. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't really want to speak on a particular agenda item because the items I would have spoke on have already been, excuse me, discussed at item. Um, so what I would like to say, and it's, I, I couldn't, the chat is disabled, otherwise I would have sent it via that way. But I would just like for you guys to know, um, every time when you're not muted, every time when you guys move something in your office when someone is speaking, like Christine, there were a couple of things that you were saying earlier in this meeting. Um, and I Vice Mayor Ho and a couple of other people were moving things. It cuts out your mic and the public cannot hear you. And it switches screen to the person who's making the most noise. Um, and so I just wanted to let you guys know and if there's a way that we could kind of mute people, um, or they could mute themselves when we're having discussion or someone is talking so that we don't miss pertinent information. Also, if there's a way to switch to grid view so that at least during oral communication, when the public is actually addressing the council, we feel like we're actually talking to people and they're hearing us and paying attention. Um, it would be greatly appreciated because talking to a blank screen that just says my name, it really doesn't give me a sense that anyone's actually hearing me. Um, so that's all I have and thank you so much. And I know we're all still getting used to this way of doing things, but I do appreciate your attention and consideration for it.
All right. City club?
I have no additional speakers.
All right, with that, I close oral communication. Uh, next we have consent calendar or matters. This under the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion followed by roll court vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. Councilmember Doe, yep.
Yeah, I would like to move the um item three point two. Um, and uh, we need to publicly discuss this and to get out of the consent calendar.
Actually have, I actually have councilmember Contreras who did that at the same time as Vice Mayor Ho, so um, so that's already.
So Vice Mayor Ho?
For the, for the meeting. For the meeting minutes on uh April eighth, uh, I see there's a, an arrow. I would like to point out to uh to all um, under, under five point one, regular business. There was a motion and also the second by, by the same person, uh, which is a uh, councilmember, so, 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 so. So I guess that we need to, uh, I don't know who.
We can fix, we can fix that and bring it up, bring it to the next.
Okay.
So, so you'll just need to pull, so you can pull, pull items number three point two and three point one and just move the warrant register.
All right, so mayor, I, I have a motion to move our three point three.
Second.
All right.
So that was Vice Mayor Ho and Vice Mayor Ho seconded by councilmember Doe to approve three point three. Um, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that will bring you to three point two.
All right, so item three point two, extension to the E and A with uh Sheldon Development, I would say.
Uh, the reason I pulled this item one is because I think there's just too many questions. I think um, obviously there's been, you know, legality questions kind of thrown out there. There's a, there's a cloud of confusion. And so at this moment, I'm not ready to vote for this item and also there's some things I like to see be part of it. And I think I'm not ready to vote for this item.
Any comment from any other councilmember? Before I call for the vote? All right, so I move to approve this item.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Uh, I thought we're gonna make a motion to move that to uh the item three point two. How publicly we discuss because there's an issue with the closed session. Um, one of the residents that brought up the issue that we need to publicly discuss this item, uh, so that the public can understand what we've come from. And that's why we have to uh put back these uh item on the agenda. So can we have a staff report and while we talk about and uh, oh.
City attorney?
Yes, uh, on April twenty second, the council met and closed session to discuss a real property negotiations related to an E and A that was entered into with Sheldon Development a while ago. Uh, that, that E and A has been subsequently extended and uh it was due to expire at the end of April. Uh, Mr. Sheldon approached the city and asked that it be extended further because uh, just for an additional ninety days. Um, mainly because of the COVID nineteen situation. Uh, there was a lot of difficulty in conducting business during that period. In addition, uh, there was a, the unexpected departure of the former city manager Eddie Manfro and the former assistant city manager Chet Simmons. Both of those officials were the two primary people that were most familiar with this project and working uh with Sheldon Development. Um, and based on that, the council felt that a short extension of ninety days um would not be that long and was appropriate given all of those circumstances I just mentioned. Um, they did vote on that in closed session to approve it. Um, it was reported out of closed session in great detail, uh, with a lot of the information that I just said. Uh, it was contingent on uh making sure that uh Sheldon Development paid a certain amounts that were already owed and also an additional fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, he did come in and make that payment to the city. It was about thirty seven thousand dollars that was paid. And so uh subsequent to that, we did receive a complaint that it was uh that alleging that it was in violation of the Brown Act. Uh, in my opinion, it did not violate the Brown Act. However, uh, it, it, there is an issue with the way it was listed on the agenda. So an abundance of caution, uh, the proper way to make sure that this is corrected is to put it on the open agenda such as we've done here to reaffirm the original approval. So really, that's what you'd be doing. Um, the recommendation here is that the mayor and city council reaffirm their approval, their prior approval of this extension for ninety days of the exclusive negotiating agreement with Sheldon Development uh related to the civic center. And uh, that is it.
The last time that we talked, um, there was some um issue that he still owes some money. Is that correct? Um, sure.
Yes, that, that was an issue when this was discussed and that was a contingency of him getting the ninety day extension. So he did come in shortly thereafter and make a payment and the city manager can speak to that.
Yes, I can confirm that he did come and make that payment and we have been made whole. In addition, he gave us an additional fifteen thousand dollars to cover, you know, costs during this next ninety day period.
Okay, there was a issue with the Terry Rain brought up that the uh, the um, Mr. Sheldon make a February request to have the um contract extended ninety days, is that correct?
Yes, he did request an additional ninety days.
Thank you, city manager. So do we have any other comment or any other question or concerns from member from the city council? Before we call for the vote? All right, with that, I call for the question.
Okay, so we had, um, we have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho to uh, to approve the extension to the exclusive negotiating agreement with Sheldon Development for the development of the civic center eighty two hundred Westminster Boulevard. So for the vote, um, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Again, I still have a number of questions and I don't need to be an answer inside a factory, so at this moment, I'm gonna abstain.
Councilmember Doe?
Abstain.
And councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carried three zero two with councilmembers Contreras and Doe abstaining.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings. City club?
Yes, so due to COVID nineteen restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Speakers during public comments will each have five minutes to speak on each public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing was a, is able to participate in one of two ways. Submit comments in writing up to twenty four hours prior to the meeting or submit a speaker request prior to the start of the public hearing item. Um, because we had mentioned that we had some issues with the system. Um, at the time that the public hearing is open for each item, uh, we will ask that anyone who wishes to speak on that particular item, just raise your hand um in the attendee box and um, and will, you'll get your five minutes to speak. Um, we did have a request uh in advance as well.
All right, with that, item four point one, weed abatement, this is an annual item, spring twenty twenty, uh, before we have a staff report, may I ask? Okay, so anyway, uh, may I have a staff report?
This time I'd like to ask Marwan Yusuf, the public works director, to present this.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, again, this is our typical um weed abatement item that comes to you twice a year, once in the fall and once in the uh, once in the um, can, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, we can hear you, yeah.
Yes, okay, uh, we bring it to you twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring, of course, this is the spring uh time. And what we've done different this time is that we've given advanced notice to the uh friendly notice to uh, to twelve parcels. And then as a result, uh, tw- eight of them were cleaned in timely manner and we only had to send four certified notices to uh, to four parcels. And then out of that, we are only down to uh one parcel or one owner who owns two parcels that hasn't been done yet. So we believe that be after tonight's meeting that will be taken care of. And if not, then we will have our contractor uh take care of it and then charge the property owner. Another thing we've done different this year is that um, I know councilman Contreras asked for more stuff to be done on this item. So what we've been doing different in a, in a positive way is that uh, every three months, we are issuing friendly notices to property owners to give him uh, to tell them to go ahead and clean their properties. And then we follow that by with inspections and we are fi- finding really uh great compliance uh with our requests. So the program is working very well. And that's all I have.
Yes, uh, uh, I really appreciate uh your report and I have a question. Due to COVID nineteen, uh, does our staff any, have any uh, have any, any problem with that?
No, no, we don't have any problems. Our staff in the field are always have masks and gloves on when they contact people and they, of course, keep social distancing uh as, as required. So we have not have any, any problems out there.
All right, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your answer, yes. So uh, any, any question from members of city council before I open a public hearing? All right, so I hear none, so open public hearing then.
Okay, at this time, if anybody would like to speak on this particular item, if you can just raise your hand, I'll give you a few seconds.
All right, so we don't have any speaker, so uh, close public hearing. So uh, this is a time for council action. I'd like to move?
Move.
All right. Second.
Okay, so that motion was made by councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta. Okay, and that's to overrule any objections received for the abatement of the weeds and to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster determining and declaring that weeds are growing upon certain streets, sidewalks, parkways and private property in the city of Westminster and rubbish and refuse to deposit on sidewalks, parkways and private property in the city and that the same are a public nuisance, ordering into the city manager to have said weeds destroyed and to have rubbish and refuse removed as required by law. So Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five zero.
Next item, uh, four point two, adoption of multiple plan and documents related to expenditure of federal rent funds, CDBG and home. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, mayor. At this time, I'd like to ask interim community development director Alexis Mittel to give the report.
Good evening, mayor and city council. This item is a culmination of a three step annual process where we adopt a series of plans that will allow us to receive and spend federal grant dollars in the form of CDBG and home funds for the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty one. You have a number of documents before you tonight that are all part of this package. The consolidated plan lays out a five year strategic plan. It's a framework for how funds are expended over the five years to benefit low and moderate income residents. As a part of that five year process, there are two additional documents that need to be adopted, which include the citizen participation plan that outlines how residents can participate in the process of uh disseminating these grant funds and also the analysis of impediments. And this is a regional document. All the Orange County cities and the county banded together to um research this and provide this document to each of the cities. It reviews and analyzes and housing discrimination issues around the county and provides guidelines for how those issues can be addressed. Now where the rubber kind of really hits the road here for this coming year is what's called the annual action plan. So this plan details for a one year period fiscal year twenty twenty one, how CDBG and home funds will be spent. We'll receive approximately or will have approximately one point four million dollars in CDBG grant funds, which we are proposing to use to pave roads, to do improvements at Sigler Park, um, which supports our part, our brand new Parks Master Plan uh, and also support operations at the Family Resource Center, the Senior Center, the Senior Meals Program, uh, Fair Housing Services and more. There are two um programs that are really of note in this annual plan that have not been included before. The first is a revised and revamped code enforcement program. This program has been designed to focus on maintaining the health and the quality of our multifamily rental properties around um, around a specific geographic area in the west side bounded by Trask, Hazard, Edwards and Hoover. The code enforcement team that will be working in this area will work to support the landlords that own these rental properties, ensuring that they're meeting all health and safety standards through an inspection program and also providing information on property maintenance, proper care. This uh helps, you know, um deter deterioration of these properties and then also helps to protect the tenants that are living inside them. And then the second new program that has been added this year uh was brought to city council the last meeting, which is the tenant based rental assistance program or TBRA. This program allocates four hundred thousand dollars to assist families that are currently experiencing homeless or near to experiencing homelessness and help them to stay in housing. Through uh the assistance of a vendor, they will assist these families in finding stable housing. The program will fund um subsidizing of their rental payments for a period of time and then also provide wraparound services so that these families can become successful and maintaining their safe housing into the future. There are some really great programs uh planned for, for next year and um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Really appreciate uh for your report, yes. Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, may I have a comment? I just want to thank you, Alexa, for really doing the most of what we have. I think we did a pretty good job of cutting this out carefully with a scalpel and just carefully slicing out pieces to preserve some of our programming. You know, our work with the Family Resource Center, our Senior Center Outreach, obviously our home delivered meals program, I think is absolutely essential. You know, Project Shoe, which is always kind of hanging on just that shoe, uh shoe string and no pun intended there. But I just think that we're doing a great job and I'm really, really pleased to see us um, look at it a different way when we look at our housing dollars, our home funds to help families that are currently struggling and we're really meeting with the times. I mean, the money that we have isn't really going to build a, you, maybe, maybe it'd be, build one unit, maybe a one bedroom studio or, I mean, a one bedroom apartment or studio. But I think the money that we have and able to allocate to help with rental assistance will help, you know, have a greater impact. You know, have a greater impact and I think it'd be really helpful to a lot of our families right now, especially now that we're struggling. So again, thank you for the really attention you gave to this assignment. I know it's a long process. But I think you did a fine job and I want to get behind it and support it and make a motion.
All right, I second, oh.
I want to say.
No, 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 any other, any other comment or question, a lot of council members.
Yes, same thing for me. I know there's a lot of effort that you put in here, so I wanted thanks for that effort. However, I do have one question on page five of the staff report Under proposed home activities. And the first bullet is Westminster Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, that we have $400,000 there. The last paragraph saying that the city is proposing to assist eight households over a period of 24 months. I was thinking, why not divide it into 12-month period? And then, so we have like 16 households instead of eight. That way we can help out more of the residents instead of just narrowed out and help with the two years timeframe. They may not need for the two years period, they may need, you know, for the one year so that they can move on. But then that way we can help, you know, eight more households. What do you have? What's your recommendation on that?
Yeah, you know what? I apologize because that is a typo. We are estimating we would be able to help 14 families over the course of the 24 months. We have, we have received a proposal that staff is recommending to move forward with Interval House as the vendor. And they believe they can actually get to 16 families with their experience and their network. So yes, I apologize, that should not say eight.
And I just want to add that I think I brought this up earlier as well and I think we're really restricted to the amount That we're allowed to allocate per family, is that correct? So we couldn't, and much if we want to cut the pie up some more and help, I don't think we're really allowed to, is that correct?
Yeah, the rules around traditional home funds are more rigid. Yeah.
I agree with Councilman Nguyen. I think if we could carve it out a little more, allow more families, that'd be great. But from what I understand, we just can't do it. But 16 families to me is far greater than one, so I'm very pleased to, thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen, want to continue?
Yeah, if, you know, if we can't do anything about it, then I understand. But, you know, 14 is better than eight now, okay?
I just want to understand that. Go ahead, are you done?
Not yet. So the ruined regulation that we have to help people with 24-month period instead of 12-months period?
That, yes, that is the recommended timeframe by HUD in order to stabilize the household. Now, if they, if they, the idea is that we work them out of the program sooner, that is the hope.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Doe.
So Alexa, so what I understand is, so they just wanted to place somebody in the program, they don't want to kick them out in 12 months. Just want to make sure that they train and really to sustain on their own, is that the logic behind the 24-months?
That's correct, yes. That kind of speaks to the wraparound services that, you know, They're receiving connections to job training or anything else that's going to help them stabilize over the long term.
So the $400,000 would basically just cover the rental aspect of it, does it include to train?
No, it covers the rental aspect, so what Interval House will help do is connect them to other subsidized programs Through different vendors around the county that will provide the training and other resources.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other question or comment from other member?
No, I move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Councilmember Nguyen and a second by Vice Mayor Ho. City Club?
I believe, I think we have to hold the public hearing piece.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, so.
We did earlier. Is that in order?
We did earlier for weed abatement. We have to do it three times tonight.
All right, yes. Open the public hearing before we vote, open for public hearing.
So I have, let's see, let's bring up, so I did receive an e-comment for this item, which is, so I'd like to just enter that into the record. We had an email from Irene Martinez on behalf of Meals on Wheels, Orange County, formerly Senior Service. And she just stated that Meals on Wheels, Orange County, would like to thank you for the continued support of our home delivered meals Program over the years. In the wake of these dynamic times, we have adapted our programs to continue serving senior population. We ramped up our Meals on Wheels Home Delivered Program, all while following many social distancing and disinfecting guidelines. On behalf of the board and management team, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, your assistance is greatly appreciated. And then at this time, we have two speakers, it looks like in the queue, so first is Terry Rains. Let me allow and unmute. Terry, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Yes, I was here going, wait, wait, open the public hearing. Anyway, I have to agree with Councilman Nguyen and Councilman Contreras and I would like maybe staff to, The comment was made that HUD recommends the 24-month period. It didn't sound like, is that a mandate or is that a, just a recommendation? Because, you know, perhaps we could do it reverse where you had 12 months for the initial people And then if anybody needed it longer than that, fine, if not, you could add on, you know, I don't know if that crosses a different fiscal year and stuff, To add on, you know, additional people if that money wasn't used for the first round of people. So just, you know, I concur with both of them and maybe there's a way that we can help more people with this. And if it is just a recommendation as opposed to a demand or a mandate from HUD, then it'd be great to look into that. So maybe staff can explain that further to council and to us so that we understand it. And then just one other comment off-related, but I agree with Camilla, please mute yourselves if you're not speaking Because every time you move your papers or anything, it cuts out when somebody's speaking and we can't hear. So anyway, that's it, thank you for this one, I will speak on the next one. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, we have Jody Boyd. Jody, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just want to touch upon the item that they were about to vote on without public hearing. And the fact that there is apparently a typo on the number of families that can receive some Through this program, I believe, don't we need to make sure that the wording is absolutely correct And reflects the actual number of families that will be assisted and for what term? And remove the typo before we can vote on it. That's all I have.
City Attorney, would you like to respond? To that further comment, City Attorney?
I'm thinking that if you see an error, you can approve it with whatever changes that you want to adopt right now. With respect to the 24-month issue, I don't know if that's a possibility. If it's, if it's in question as to whether it's a possibility, you could always approve it And instruct Alexa to see if that's possible and if it is to implement it. But if not, to just go forward with the 24 months, so you could add that, assuming it's even possible. But I don't see a reason to hold off approving this based on one error. The issue is if you can correct it and get it right tonight, then it should be ready for approval today.
All right, so who would to correct that? Do we need to revise that in a motion or our staff only need to correct now? City Attorney?
I guess I would defer to Alexa, do we have the corrections at issue? I guess there was only the one, I think you mentioned.
Right, in the staff report. So yes, I mean, you could revise it, however, I do want to clarify a little bit more about how the TBRA program works, Which means, and what I'm getting at is The assistance that a household receives is based on their income and the rent in wherever they're living. So it's not a fixed number. So going into this, we can't know exactly how many people are going to be assisted. We can allocate $400,000 and assist as many people as we can. But there's no, it's not a set number, we can't say it's $1,000 per family per month. It's going to depend on their income level, their family size and where they're living. So it's, it's not a perfect number system.
In the 24 months?
I, I believe that the 24 months is, is recommended by HUD because it gets to that stabilization piece. Now, can we, can we lower it? I would want to, I would want to double check with our HUD representative, who we do work with very closely on a daily basis to make sure that That we're doing everything correctly.
Could we do that? I mean, will that really delay us that much longer, come back again? It'd be good just to get a solid yes or no, that we can or cannot open the window a little more, let more people in? Is that possible?
More people in if it would, unless you increased the funding.
But I meant in terms of the period of time, like, does it be from, I mean, one year is a long time for, I mean, that's a pretty good time to Get people kind of find, I mean, there's no perfect time, it's all relative, but I think a year, I think is fair To give a family the time to, you know, find a new pathway. Two years is a really long time, I mean, that's, that's solid ground right there. But if we could help more people, if we lowered the threshold to 12 months versus 24 months, I'd like to see that, I'd like to take a piece of that and see what we can do, if that's possible.
City Attorney, I have a question, so if the council approved this item tonight and the staff want to conform with HUD? And if we have a new number that we could able to convince HUD, so do we need to bring back to the meeting?
No, you could, you could move as recommended. With the one recommendation that we change it from a 24 months to a 12-month period, if that is possible. If it is not, then to go with 24 months.
All right, so I'll make that motion to move the item with that, with the, with understanding if we can move the 12 months that we do so. If not, then we revert back to 24 months.
Councilmember Nguyen, you want to second up? Okay, I second up.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with the staff report because that's what, that's the, that's the condition that HUD Impose for the grant and we need to follow their rules. But we can approve this with a stipulation that we can check with HUD, that we can convince them to change The term from 12 to, from 24 months to 12 months. And we're going to allow staff to make that decision. Is that okay, City Attorney?
Absolutely, yes, that's, that's the motion on the table, on the table right now.
Okay.
Oh, we don't have any speaker, right? Did I close the public hearing?
No, not yet, that's why I was waiting for you to close the public hearing before I modified the motion.
Yeah, because you know, yeah, okay, so do we have any other speaker?
No, we did not have any additional speaker.
All right, so I close public hearing then, so, and there is a motion on the floor, yeah.
Yes, so the motion, yes, the motion on the floor is, it stands made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Mayor Ta. And that's to adopt the following fiscal year 2020, 21 fiscal, to fiscal year 2024, 25 consolidated plan. Fiscal year 2021 annual action plan, fiscal year 2020 to 2021. To fiscal year 2024, 25 citizen participation plan. Fiscal year 2020, 2021 to fiscal year 2024, 25 multifamily rental inspection program code enforcement strategy. And fiscal year 2020, 2021 to fiscal year 2024, 25 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And also to, to consider dropping from 24 to 12 months if possible per HUD. So Mayor Ta.
No, no, hold on.
Before you win?
Yes. Yes, you know, I was waiting for you to close the public hearing before I modified the motion. But so, I mean, Councilmember or Contreras already make that motion, so, you know, If you second it or I second it, that's as fine as possible.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, the change from 12 months to, or 24 months to 12 months is only applicable with respect to the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. I just want to make sure that's clarified.
All right.
All right.
Any, any comment or question from any other council member before I call for the vote?
No.
All right. City Club?
All right, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried 5-0.
Thank you, next item, 4.3, substantial amendment to the annual action plan fiscal year 2019, 2020. And amendment to the citizen participation plan to allow for new programs and expenditure of CDBG and home funds As a result of Federal Care Act, so may I have a staff report?
Yes, good evening again. So this, just as we looked at next year's annual action plan, This item is to amend our current year action plan, so the 1920 annual action plan. The reason behind that amendment is because as a part of the Federal Cares Act, Response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city did receive additional CDBG funding. The purpose of this funding is to address COVID-related issues. So in order to spend this money, we must approve the amendment to the plan, those are HUD rules. And then we also must amend the citizen participation plan In order to address the pandemic and increase the amount of digital and online public participation that's included in the plan. So there are two separate programs that are being proposed to spend these COVID-related CDBG funds on. I'll take the simpler one first, which is to provide about $95,000 in funding that will augment our rapid rehousing program. This is an already existing program that we fund out of the housing fund. It provides for temporary housing for those experiencing homelessness as well as other urgent needs like emergency food and those types of things. This would run identically to our existing program, just utilizing CDBG funds in this case To, while we're at the stay-at-home orders, to reach those that are experiencing homelessness. And if they're willing, we can provide them with temporary shelter. This is a joint effort between our homeless liaison officer, as well as the Housing Division and our CityNet outreach partner. The essentially new program that's being introduced here is a rental support program. It's a subsistence program is the term used in CDBG funds. Now, there's a lot going on, so I want to try to walk through the different steps here clearly So that everyone has a decent understanding of how it will work. To qualify to receive assistance, an applicant must be a Westminster resident and they must lease their home here in Westminster. Now, you can rent an apartment, you can rent a mobile home, you can rent a room, but you need to have a lease agreement here in the city. An applicant to qualify must also make 50% or below 50% of the area median income As determined by how those guidelines are published annually. And the applicant must have been financially impacted by COVID-19 pandemics, financially impacted. So they have lost their job, they've had reduced hours, they've had increased medical expenses, those types of things. This program is intended to provide rental assistance. The funds are to stabilize the household in their home for up to three months. And as a secondary outcome, it actually helps to stabilize the landlord who is probably paying a mortgage on the property. The applicant can qualify for up to $1,500 per month for a total of three months, so $4,500 maximum cap per household. And that goes specifically towards rent. The funding is paid directly to the landlord and the landlord has to agree to this. The funding is paid directly to the landlord and the landlord has to agree to this. The process um, is. Quick and staff has spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to make this run effectively and get the funding out to these residents. Um, so we, we plan to have information on the website tomorrow. Most things have uh, are in translation. Or have been completed in translation with any amendments that may happen tonight um, to get the information out quickly. And then, beginning next Monday, people would be able to pick up paper copies at City Hall of applications if they don't have the ability to print them themselves. And they can do that at the City Hall or at the Family Resource Center in person. So signs will be posted at both of these locations at the front doors, since neither of these buildings are open to the public. So you can walk up and there will be instructions there on what to do, what phone number to call, and someone will walk that application out to you. Completed applications can be emailed, mailed, or dropped off at City Hall and or the FRC between May twenty-sixth and June ninth. This is, I think, a fifteen-day total period um, working hours, so not on weekends. And all applications do need to be received by five P M on June ninth. There will be some walk-up days is what we're calling them, so a period of three days, June second, third, and fourth, in the middle of this application period. Where we will open uh, the largest room over at Community Services. So any residents that feel that they need some technical assistance in person will have the opportunity to come in. Uh, we will strictly enforce social distancing, masks, protective equipment as much as we can. And try to make sure that, you know, we we have that ability to have those conversations with residents that may not feel comfortable using an email address or. Or a phone for whatever reason. Um, staff is certainly available by email and phone this entire period. Uh, specific email address has been set up for this program. We will um, receive applications all the way up until June ninth. And then, once all the applications are in, we will literally put them into manila envelopes and begin a lottery system. So the lottery will draw uh, the first one hundred to begin with, and then staff um, starting with. Number one, we'll go through and vet the application to make sure that they meet the qualifications. Those that do will be contacted and told how to take the next steps in the process. And those that either don't meet the qualifications or um, were not pulled from the lottery will also be contacted and informed. So by approving this amendment, um, staff will, you know, work towards making all paperwork as available as we can, as quickly as we possibly can. Make ourselves available to answer questions and assist, and then have these kind of three days of walk-ups for one-on-one conversations as needed. And those are, those are the only two programs that um, will be supported by this additional CARES Act funding through CDBG. You can answer questions.
So I have a question. The first day for, for accepting application in May twenty-sixth. And the last day is June nine, am I right?
Correct.
And uh, we have, we need to set up like the lottery process. It's not like first, first come, first served.
Right. It's a lottery, uh-huh.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ho.
Um, are you expecting any more of this Federal CARES Act money? Or do you know this is it?
I I don't think. You don't know?
Yeah, City Manager, this is a different funding from the funding that uh, City Manager and myself. Been discussed with any other mayor, right, and supervisors, some supervisor. City Manager, this is, this is different funding, right?
It is a different funding source. This is funding that's going through the CDBG uh, funding source. Um, we don't know what the, what the federal government's going to do. At this point, we're still hoping for money for the city. Um, so uh, as of now, this is what we know, and this is what we're able to use the monies for.
And I believe the other funding City Manager, I would like you to come. Really, we want to confirm that the other funding that we've been discussed with other mayors. That basically that uh, that emergency funding. That the federal is supposed to reimburse for our, our city expenditure regarding COVID nineteen emergency, am I right?
Correct. So the money that we've gotten so far from the CARES or from the federal government is in three point, I believe it's three point oh. That's going directly to the county. The county will disperse that money as they see fit to do, and then we can apply for FEMA. What the, what Mayor, you and I have been advocating for and as well as the other city managers. Has been a, a, money's coming directly to the city that would make up for lost revenues. Um, because a lot of our money, as you know, as publicly know, has been deferred. Uh, the state has told a lot of. For instance, our sales tax monies, we're, if you're making less than a certain amount of money, we will not see that money for over a year. So we're gonna be shorted some money. So the next push from the government is, we're asking uh, for them to actually extend the city's money directly. And that's still not, it's been discussed now, but nothing so far on the table for us.
Vice Mayor Ho is up, uh, answer to your question. Vice Mayor Ho.
Uh, yeah, I, yes, I got my answer. So basically, there will be a lottery, and right now you don't know if there's gonna be more of this money to come, but um. Okay, I mean, it sounds like a good program and it's gonna help out as many people as it could help out. So I moved to approve.
Open, we have to open.
I still have a question, Mayor. I'm still holding.
Yes, Councilmember Contreras.
Uh, Alexis question um, on, well, one, thanks for moving so fast on this item. I know we brought it. You, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, but it feels like a lifetime. Um, thanks for, for moving it forward. I know that you were working really hard trying to decipher all the information that's been coming and changing day by day. Um, I do appreciate, again, the expediency on this, on this project as we move forward. I have a question in terms of the timeline. It seems like a really tight, tight window. I mean, today is the thirteenth, and once this item gets approved, if it gets approved. Um, it, we're gonna, you know, open application process, I think, at the twenty, twenty-six, correct?
Yeah, well, yes, we will start receiving them on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and then it closes like, like about a week after, which. I think, is there, are we married to that? That timeline, or can we widen it up a little bit, just to allow the community a little more time to um, one, learn about it? And be able to have the ample time to apply for it. I just think it's a really, really tight window. Um, it doesn't really allow, I mean, you, if you know, information travels really slow sometimes, unless it's, unless it's bad news, of course. And I think um, um, you know, an example of that is on, on the agenda, which I'll, I'll talk about a little bit later, but. I think um. What can we do to, to change that time and are we, are required by the federal government to adhere to it?
Yeah, the, this one is, actually has a lot less strings as part of the, as part of the CARES Act. They lightened up a lot of the restrictions um, in terms of some of those, you know, more rigid timelines and pieces that are part of other programs. So for this, um, what staff was trying to balance the idea of getting the funding out. Because really from today to when, you know, we could theoretically make mail checks under, it is structured, it is about two months. So we were trying to balance getting the funding out.
Yes.
As well as, you know, giving people some time to learn about the program and a little time to uh, apply. We can certainly extend that timeline.
At least by, I, I just request that we can do at least by one week, just one week longer to turn the application and then, you know, the window to submit. And that, I do understand the urgency, we need to get it out in people's hands and give them that security, but I also know that, you know. Right now, there's just too much information, misinformation, and I think you just think this is such a great program and want to. Let's make sure that the community really is aware of it. And um, whatever we can do to work together to spread that information throughout the community, to give everybody the opportunity, I think it would be essential for all of us.
Um, I kind of agree with uh, uh, Councilmember uh, Contreras, that if we can extend that for another week. But at the same time, uh, it's just, uh, my understanding is that um, on May fourteen, which is tomorrow. You are going to put out the um, the notice uh, um, you know, to the people, right? So they do have all that time frame up till tonight. The X, uh, the application acceptance period is only May uh, twenty-sixth to tonight. Uh, but they do have the time before that to, to, to consider. So, you know, if we, if we can extend uh, another week, that's fine. If not, then I think that they still, still have some time before that. Instead of one week, it's already uh, going from May fifteen to tonight.
Yeah, at least in, at least an extra week.
Okay. Alright, I also have, uh, I just wanted to clarify, um, you mentioned earlier um, during the staff report. Um, the two days that you have uh, uh, at the community center that you open up for people to go have any question. Is that on June second and third?
It's three days.
And also, if I'm not mistaken, that you also said that uh, for the people who shared the room can also uh, qualify for this one. If they are in, in the, uh, in, in need for help.
If they live in Westminster and they have a lease agreement, yes, they can.
For the workshop, so are they good to be here or they uh, have the virtual meeting?
For the walk-ups, the idea is that they are in person in the Community Services Building. So utilizing kind of that patio space as well as that largest uh, kind of community room in there to make sure we can keep up with the distancing.
I see, okay. Alright, any other, any other comment or question from members from the city council before open a public hearing? Vice Mayor Ho, do you have anything to say or no?
No.
Okay, so I open public hearing. See you, club.
We received, we did not receive any um, e-commerce, written e-commerce. Uh, but we do have speakers. Uh, first speaker is Terry Rains. Terry, are you with us?
Yes. Whenever. Hear me, okay. Uh, good evening, Terry Rains Westminster. This item allows for new programs and expenditures of CDBG and home funds as a result of the Federal CARES Act allocation to the city. Of five hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Most of that CARES money, four hundred fifty thousand plus forty-three thousand in administration costs, would go toward helping an estimated hundred.
Hello? Technical difficulties?
Okay, hello?
Hello?
Happen? Did I get muted in the middle? Where do, do I start over, Christine? Hello? Hello?
Yes, you can start, you can start over, sorry.
Alright, we'll try it again. Good evening, Terry Rains Westminster. This item allows for new programs and expenditures of CDBG and home funds. As a result of the Federal CARES Act allocation to the city of five hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Most of that CARES money, as Alexa explained, four hundred fifty thousand plus forty-three thousand in administration costs would go toward helping an estimated hundred households. Pay their rent up to forty-five hundred dollar uh, cap, paid over a three-month period. Through an application and then lottery selection process. I had some questions based on the discussion. I thought I heard you say at one point that, starting on Monday, you could actually get the application, but then you couldn't accept it. And you can clarify this if you want, um, until the five twenty-sixth. I'm just wondering if somebody, if you can submit it via email. Is it still like in a queue if uh, you know, if they send it earlier and then is it? That anyway, I just need that explained a little bit more, if you can, maybe for uh, the council as well. Um, and then um, also, it's the, it's an update to the fiscal nineteen twenty um, annual plan. But the annual plan will uh, or the fiscal year anyway will be end before this money is paid out. So I just wondered if the money was allocated into the next annual plan to cover it or how that works. Again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert on how this works, but I just, you know, we'll be at the end of the fiscal year before we actually start paying out any money. So um, I had a question about that. Then um, let's see, the remaining ninety-five thousand would go towards the rapid rehousing program for about twenty-five homeless individuals. In the form of motel vouchers, providing food and other necessities, plus related support service costs need to carry out the program, which I think is great. Um, but the public comment period for these program amendments is five days. And it began on May eighth and ends today, from what I now understand. The staff report says that the amended citizen participation plan and FY nineteen twenty annual action plan amendment number four substantial. Were posted on the city's website for public review and comment. Like with so many other important announcements and deadlines, posting it on the city's website does not adequate notice uh, to the public, in my opinion. And the same absolutely goes for the rental assistance uh, program in general. I understand HUD released a memo making available waivers for the um, consolidate planning requirements for the citizen participation. Public comment period, but keeping the public informed is really important, uh, especially in these times. And not everybody is in, on the internet, and especially those that are very low income, uh, that have been affected by this. They may not have lost their inca- internet connection, they may not be able to afford it anymore, they may not have it in the first place. So I don't know how the public outreach happens, but it can't just be on the website, in my opinion. Um, there's room for improvement on all levels of communication from the city to its residents, especially during this time. I am glad we received the additional funds that can be used for these programs, but I wish I had more time to review the consolidated plan amendments in detail. Uh, the key to success for both programs, programs will be who administers them and how that is done. It appears the PD will handle the rapid rehousing program, as they already are, uh, for the homeless. And the city staff will handle the rental assistance pro, new program. But I am asking the city be fair and objective when administering these programs, and I understand it's a lottery. Um, but I just want to make sure that uh, for the rental part, it's, but even on, on the homeless issue, make sure that there. You know, everything is administered fairly, and also that it goes back to the business assistance, that everything be done fair. Um, objectively, with no bias uh, towards anybody. Um, and then also for any future uh, COVID nineteen funds that come our way, which the county board of supervisors is discussing. Um, and it was, it, it didn't pass by one vote at the last meeting, but they expect to pass it maybe at the next meeting. Where there'll be care money coming to us for um, uh, small business assistance. So that kind of goes back, I know that's another item, but anyway. Um, the city does have an alleged history, alleged, of misappropriation of funds at times. So I for one, don't want to see that happen when so many in our city are in need. Um, I think it's great that we're getting this money, but I want to make sure that we know that. We need to buckle down regardless, that we're doing these programs because we get the money, and that's okay. But doing programs that we don't have the money for, such as the small business thing, is not okay in my book. So anyway, that's it, thank you.
Alright, Alexa, would you like to respond to a few concerns?
We still have one more speaker.
Okay, sorry.
So we have uh, Jody, Jody Boyd, are you with us? Jody, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, yes, I would like to echo Terry's concern. Um, that, you know, the residents who would most benefit. From this type of assistance, they don't have internet access. Or they're not internet savvy. So whatever is being posted on the website and um, social media. Um, is just completely unknown to them. So we need to find, and this is now and moving forward, we might, need to find direct ways to outreach. Now, I'm especially concerned um, demographically about our um. Hispanic and Caucasian low-income residents who could really benefit from this. They don't have the luxury of the established uh, Vietnamese newspapers and media. Where I, I can already bet that tomorrow I can go on the Vietnamese media and learn more about this program. So we need to find ways to do much better outreach. To inform our lower-income Hispanic and Caucasian residents. Um, to that degree, what do I have to do? Come down on Monday and run off a hundred copies. And walk them door to door in our uh, low-income areas in District Two. Uh, where there are a lot of low-income Hispanic and Caucasian. So I'm just really concerned about, you know, I understand it's gonna be a lottery, but I'm concerned about. The demographics of those manila envelopes that are going into the lottery. And I'm also curious about this lottery. Um, and more details about how we're gonna run it. What are we getting, like one of those great big barrel? You know, rolling barrel lot, you know, to mix them up. Throwing them up in the air? Will the public be? View the, view the lottery, you know, how do we make this all very, very open and fair? That's it.
All right, thank you. City Club, do we have any other speaker?
I have no additional speakers.
All right, Alexa, is anywhere that you can respond to a few concerns from our first speaker?
Sure, I can try. With regards to the process, yes, we would try to make the application available tomorrow. With regards to the email, you know, and kind of how that works, someone emailing it in, and if it's not already May 26th, that it's not going to be a perfect system. We're going to do our very best to let people know if they email their application in, that, you know, the window opens on May 26th, so we can certainly be responsive via email. There's no perfect answer. It's a, it's a brand-new program, and we are trying to figure it out the best we can as we go. With regards to, you know, ensuring fairness, yes, absolutely. We intend to have a number of people that are participating and/or witnessing, you know, the lottery drawing of the manila envelopes. We absolutely don't want anyone to be able to say that it wasn't done fairly. And in terms of, you know, getting the word out there, that, that is a challenge. It certainly is. However, I would say that, you know, we do have a lot of community members that are very connected to us, and maybe it's not on social or following our webpage, but they do engage with our Community Services Division, they do engage at the Family Resource Center with our senior center. So we, we do have community connections that, you know, we will utilize to the best of our ability.
Yeah, I appreciate your answer. So we're going to advocate this program to every, every mean that we have, like our, our channel TV, our, our city website, our social media or email, I think that we try to do as many as we can, right? Yep.
Absolutely.
All right.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
You know, the.
The number though, yeah.
Yeah, the, the speaker, Jody Boyd, brought up some very valid concerns about fairness. You know, so low, low incomes family come across the racial line, I mean, whether Vietnamese, Hispanic, or Caucasian, you know, we, we all have, people live in poverty, below poverty level. So it's, it'll be a challenge for staff to distribute funds fairly evenly, so that it's representing the makeup ethnic groups in, in our city. So I, I, I would recommend that staff develop a way to distribute the money fairly, verifiable, and so that, you know, people gonna challenge us, but it's, we can explain. I don't know how I'm gonna do that, but I'm sure we will be able to go, come up with some procedures that, that anybody that, in, in the city that can come forward and challenge it, we'll be able to explain. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doe, so before I continue, receive comment from other, other member from the City Council, I think that our city staff, they go to establish a really fair lottery process, and I think this is a lottery process, so I think not going to be fair. Any other comment from Member City Council?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I know.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Um, okay, so basically, we understand that we want it done fairly. You know, I'm, I'm sure all of us want to have it, you know, this money distributed fairly. But I'm saying, what is evenly? And what is, I mean, are we bound by CB, CDBG to distribute it, you know, based on race, a certain amount, or divided up into, you know, ethnicities? I don't think so, but I just, I mean, of course, I advocate for doing it fairly. And I, I believe the speakers have really good points. Yeah, that, you know, they, they, they all have very good points, made very good points, and I want to bring the attention to, I know I've always struggled trying to get information out there in the Anglo community. And I, being that, you know, newspapers, and, I mean, just very limited, not to say that there is none, but it's just very limited in ways that we could send information out there versus the Vietnamese. So obviously, if we just look at just how many newspapers available in each ethnicity, how many ways we could get information out there, we could already guess what ethnicity going to be coming, or learn more about this, you know, this program, and, and will show up in bigger numbers than others. And not to say that just because they show up in, in bigger numbers, it's not done fairly. So I would definitely want that. I want things to get out there. You know, words get out in a quick, quick manner. I, I don't know, these days, you know, we distribute flyers as the way, and I understand that not too many people, I mean, especially when they're low income, I know people who have had their internets, you know, discontinue just because they discontinue the service because they have to get rid of, try to cut back on their expenses. So household expenses, which I understand, and so we have to take that into consideration. And, and, and I, I think these points are made so that we could stop and, and maybe staff could, could think of ways we could reach out to these people. We want to do things fairly. We do want to do things fairly. So if we could, like, come up with creative ways, maybe we got to go back to basics, maybe we got to do it in a, the way we used to do things, not the, not, you know, because the internet won't be available to those people, like I said. But that would be, and, and then the other thing I have a problem with is that why are we begin, why is this program implementing May 14th, which is how many days away from today? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
The, yeah, if approved, the information will be available on the internet tomorrow, on our website, is the intention.
Okay. And, and could you also figure out how other, what other ways are you going to distribute information or get the word out there? I mean, the speakers have said their concerns, but we, we need to address those concerns. How are we addressing those concerns? I mean, you mentioned about going down to printing up 100, I mean, do we need to do that and, or 1,000, or, you know, I know it's not very cost-effective to be mailing to people, but what are the, some of the ways you could think of?
Yes, before staff could answer, Vice Mayor Hall concerns and question, may I ask staff, how long for the staff to repair notice of this program and staff sending out a mailer? Is that going to take a lot of time and money for doing so?
If we were going to distribute a mailer?
Uh huh.
Um, yeah, it would probably take, you know, about a week and a half, two weeks to get out. Sherry Erin might remember better, but I think the Measure SS mailer was, I want to say, around $13,000 for mailing. So it would take some time and some money to do that, yeah. It could be done.
But I mean, like, it go to take, like, by the time a resident, they receive that, I mean, like, they would not have enough time, right? But I mean, if we try to do that, we go to, we go to cover the whole city. And saying, what the funding that are we going to pay for the mailer? That is that from general fund or from CDBG?
We can use CGB, CDBG funding for that, yes, I believe so.
So it go to take, like, it go to take more than a week for staff to repair notice of this program, am I right?
Everything that's in your packet, the application, the guidelines, all of that is prepared. If we were to prepare a mailer, yes, that would be an additional effort.
All right.
I trusted, okay, I trusted.
I've been waiting for my time, sir.
Alright.
Four times already. So my question to, I guess, I heard some of the concerns in terms of getting the information out. I agree, not everyone has internet access or has followed us on Facebook, and we talked about this before. I know that we talked about, you know, doing different methods. I know that the mailing would take some time, but it would, would be possible to do a mailing and still release the information. I mean, it's still going to be in a lottery system, so some people may get the information a little later. But at the end of the day, the deadline and lottery system would, would sort of take away some of that concern of first come, first served. Is, is that something we can do?
You can extend this process as long as you like. I mean, we can certainly put a pause on everything, put together a mailer, get a mailer out. We can move everything back two or three weeks, we can extend the application period, you know, all, all of that is definitely possible.
Yeah, so, so again, when I, when I brought this item forward last time around, it wasn't an intent to divide anyone. I wanted this to be an item to help the community and those in need, especially now in this time. So, I mean, I don't, again, but going back to my initial request, and, and I think I talked about earlier with Councilmember Nguyen is, if we could just add an extra week to the announcement period, and maybe even an extra week to the, to the window of submittals, and then, you know, do our part and use our avenues of communication and do it, and do a mailing, I think that's pretty fair. I mean, I, I think that, I think we're doing everything we can. Again, not everyone has internet, not everyone listens to the radio, and we're never going to be on, on, you know, Channel Four or Channel Nine or anything like that. So I think a mailing seems to be like the best mode of communication to make sure that everyone who lives in a city and would qualify for this type of program would be able to be able, aware of the, of the opportunity. So I'd like to request that we do so, add an extra week for the announcement period, an extra week for, for the submission period, and also, I mean, pursue a mailing. And again, the intention here is to deal with the emergency, which is happening now. People are not being able to pay the rent, not, you know, not working, and so we need to do, get this money out there soon as possible. So I think one week is not too much to ask.
And I'd like to second that.
No, 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 before, so, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I, I trusted that, by the concerns that we brought up by Councilmembers. Staff understand that they need to take the precaution to make sure the process is fairness to everyone. And I, I second that, the, the, having the mailer sent out to everybody should be the fair way of doing it. But at the same time, I also heard that staff mentioned that if you have any connection, in, you know, any connection that you have, maybe you can also use that to, you know, to send it out to the people on top of the mailer that the city sent out. I know it's, it's going to incur some cost for sending out the mailers, but I think that's the fairest way to do it. That's how I have.
All right. Do we have any other speaker, or did I close a public hearing? I forgot.
Yep, it's, we've already closed public hearing.
Okay, so I already closed public hearing, right? So did we have a motion on the floor?
I can move it with the, with those modifications that we made regarding giving us an additional week of announcement period, and then national week for filing, and then include a mailing that will be used from our CDBG fund.
And I would second that.
All right, so we have the motion made by Councilmember Troraas and second by Vice Mayor Hall.
Can I, can I ask for, can I ask for clarification on the date again? I know that we extend one week out of, from June 9th to whatever the date is, but did I hear that you also asked for one week of doing the mailers?
Alexa? Yeah, I'm asking for an extra week to, for the announcement period before we open the filing window. Just so we can allow time for that mailing and for the information to get out, and then to submit, it was only one week, so I, I, I recommend that we add additional week, but I, in terms of the filing period, if, since we're already going to move it one week out, I mean, we could add a few more days or an extra week, I'm open, but I think we definitely need more time, either with the announcement period and in, in the submit, submittal window.
Okay. So instead of June 9th, it's going to be, I just want to make sure the date, June 9th, and it's going to be June 16th, right? And.
Let me just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So instead of starting to receive applications on May 26th, we'll instead start to receive applications the following Monday, which is June 1st?
Well, let's back up, let's go, let's do the window of announcement period, so which opens tomorrow, right? If we're at an extra week, what would that take us to?
That would, well, the announcement period was, we start receiving applications on the 26th, which is a little under two weeks from.
Right, so we want to push it out by one week.
Okay, so well, the announcement period will run through June 2nd.
Have the extra week, and then submitting time.
We had, we had two weeks of current submittal, so we can extend that to three weeks. So that would mean one, two.
That could be two weeks. I just think, I just want to add the additional week. If that is a two-week period, that should be ample time.
Okay.
But I'm referring to the announcement, the awareness, like, hey, here, the window's going to open, you have two weeks to submit it, get it in. So I think 13, the week of the 13th, would be 13th through the 3rd, I think is a very big window, right?
Alexa, is anywhere that you can repeat the window that proposed by Councilmember again?
So I believe that the window will be extended by one week. It, and when I say the, the announcement window means the time before we were going to accept applications. We were going to begin accepting applications on May 26th. So instead, we'll push that by a week so that we begin to receive applications, hold on, my phone's not behaving, on June 2nd instead.
And that, that period lasts until?
And that period, i- if we, if we left it as it is, which is currently a full two weeks, so then we would receive applications until 5:00 PM on June 16th.
So that is a deadline, 5:00 PM on June 16th, correct?
Yes, I think that's ample time.
All right.
So that's the motion then by Councilmember Conferes?
Yes, to, to include the mailing to all, you know, households in Westminster, announcing the opportunity and with, with these deadlines.
All right, so now I call for.
But just to be clear, the second on that, because we just changed it a little bit.
It was Vice Mayor Hall.
Okay, and you're in agreement with that?
Vice Mayor? Yes, I, I am. I wrote that down, June 2nd through June 16th, 5:00 PM. That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. Call for a vote?
And do a mailer.
Yep.
So the motion as recommended. So we have three actions on the, so we have three things. First is to approve a substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2019-20, inclusive of any comments made during the previous public review period and during this evening. Authorize city staff to electronically transmit the amended components of the fiscal year 2019-20 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Department via the Econ Planning Committee, Integrated Dispersment and Information Systems, and approve an amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan to incorporate new citizen participation requirements allowed by HUD waiver during the National Emergency Declaration concerning the novel coronavirus pandemic. concerning the novel coronavirus pandemic. And then with those, the changes to the program, which is to extend, um, a week for the announcement period and then thereby extending the application period, um, June second through June sixteen and to, um, add the, um, sending of a mailer. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have regular business five point one, a wild contract for Westminster Boulevard Street Improvements Project from Beach Boulevard to New Land Street. So may I have a motion or council member, uh, do you need us, any staff report for this item?
No, motion to approve.
I.
Second.
I have, I have a question.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Or Marvin, yes, hi, hello.
Hi.
Um, okay, American, All American Asphalt, I've heard of them before, but I just wanted to know in the, in the past, when they bid for projects, have they ever been, have they always exercised their contingency?
Um, no, actually, the, actually, the are one of the best contractors we've dealt with really. We've been working with them for the last twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, contingency really is needed only if we hit some, uh, unforeseen circumstances in the field. We monitor that very well, very properly. So by no mean they take advantage of that. But the reason we, we started to, uh, have the ten percent contingency as part of the recommendation. So we don't have to come to you and stop the work in the field to get the authorization.
I know. I mean, that's really standard to have the contingency. And that, you know, because I, I tend to, I mean, sometimes, um, you know, companies play games and they would lowball, you know, they would be the bidder and knowing that we have the lowest bidder. And they have, they exercise the contingency. So by the time they exercise that contingency, it goes, they're not the lowest bidder anymore. So I'm wondering, but I've heard of this company and they're.
Yeah, and, and in fact, this was a very good bid. The engineer estimate was six twenty-five and we got it for five seventy-eight, so we're fifty thousand dollars under, underestimated, which is great.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
So may I have a motion?
Oh, we already have a motion. We have, um, council member Nguyen seconded by council member Contreras to.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, and that's to approve the award of contract to lowest and responsive bidder in the amount of five hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars to All American Asphalt and that all other bids be rejected and authorize a ten percent contingency in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents for potential change orders and authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next item, five point two, designate one point one million of economic development funds to support small business recovery. I really want to thanks, uh, Alexa, our inner room community development, uh, director and our inner room, uh, uh, city manager for come up with this item. I think this is a really, really good item. Uh, to support our business community. I think that a lot of businesses out there, they are facing the challenges because of COVID nineteen. So I think this is a really, uh, need, uh, to show our city uh, care for our business. So I really appreciate our city staff, especially Alexa. Thank you so much for that. With that, I move for approval.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please. Councilmember Contreras.
Uh, this is for Alexa. Um, I know, first off, I just want to clarify that this initiative was launched I think almost two, three years ago. It feels like two years ago, probably, a little over two, definitely over a year. And I know that our former city manager and Chet Simmons did a, did an effort to outreach to all the businesses along that strip to seek those dollars to help with facade improvements. And up until now, that money was not, I didn't seem like we had really many takers on that project. So the money's been sitting there. Um, I know that Alexa's done a good job to look for different ways to help our local businesses. Um, my question is the, the, the amount, you know, it's twenty thousand dollars. Um, I'm wondering, um, does it have to be twenty thousand dollars? Can we split the baby and make it ten, you know, and, and, um, is it, are we required to? But I mean, another number of concerns with residents that we're not, we didn't notify people about this project, but I do remember us um, marketing and sharing it and we didn't have really many takers. So are we set on the amounts? I- is it like standard twenty thousand dollars? I seen it in L.A., for example, they're doing five thousand dollar loans for small businesses of company with, uh, with employees of five or more. So I don't, like, I'm not really clear in terms of the, the, that number, how we got to that number. And is there a employee requirement in, in terms of who's allowed to, who's allowed to apply?
I, I'll start with the, the last question there. Yes, the, um, employment is twenty-five employees or less would be eligible. So trying to keep a small business, um, of five employees would be considered a micro business. And there are, uh, several micro loan programs that other cities, um, particularly in Los Angeles have been employing. But, um, the broad answer is that, yes, you can modify this. These terms were, um, the outcome of the discussion with the S B D C. Um, their business is small business. So we were trying to come up with a number that would, again, help to stabilize a small business. And their recommendation was that, yes, twenty thousand dollars would probably help a small business get through a solid two months of, um, fixed costs, like their rent, maintaining some payroll, utilities, that type of thing. So it was meant to, you know, kind of provide stability for that two-month period. You could certainly go down or go up. It was, it was really true recommendation from the S B D C that that was an appropriate funding amount to, to assist a business in a carryover situation.
Yeah, cuz, cuz I agree with the mayor that this is a good opportunity for our local businesses. I'm, I'm mildly concerned. And I, and I do agree with someone who spoke earlier that there's CARES Act funding that's still being sort of deciphered in terms of where it's gonna go and who's gonna get what and what's gonna be our portion. And, um, we've had these dollars sitting there for a bit. Um, I do know that, you know, it's similar to testing, you know, that it's coming and we don't know when the testing is gonna get here and when, when we're gonna have an actual testing site in Westminster. You know, same comes, goes with the CARE Act funding. I mean, I don't know when we're actually gonna get those dollars and there's a number of businesses still waiting for help. And we have a lot of businesses in Westminster, um, a lot of small businesses, a lot of family-owned businesses. So I think this is a great, I mean, a good attempt, um, but I, I, I do have an issue with the dollar amount. So I'm wondering if the council will consider lowering that dollar amount to ten thousand, so we can help other businesses. You know, it might not cover payroll, but it may cover just their lease on their building for a couple of months. I don't know. I'm, I'm not, um, I'm not advocating for one or the other, but I just wanna see if the council will consider that. Or, or we hold off and wait to see what the CARES Act funding will make its way here and when, and what will be allocated for small businesses.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I understand council member contrary concerns. However, I still, uh, I still want to support our staff recommendation. I think this, you know, if we read a report loan amount up to twenty thousand for business. So it's mean that not every single business, they're going to receive like the twenty thousand dollars. So it really depend on, you know, the criteria and then the circumstance of, you know, how big or small of the business. So I think this is a really good staff report. So I still, uh, supporting our staff recommendation and that is my motion.
I, I, I trust that, uh, the, our, our staff already work with, uh, with S B, um, with the other S B D C organization to come up with the, the number. Twenty thousand per business, I don't think that that's a lot for them to sustain the, you know, or, or get their business back to normal. So I would think that this is like, again, it's a loan amount up to, up to twenty thousand, uh, dollar per business. And we don't know the CARES program coming in, when is it coming, you know, when it's going to arrive or does it uh, actually been, uh, going to be awarded to, to us. So, um, with that, I, I do, uh, I do.
Vice Mayor Ho or, or council member win, uh, are you done?
I haven't finished yet. So, uh, I, I do agree to, to, with the staff for that. However, I do have a question for, for this, um, you know, maybe it's coming, uh, later on. Um, when you, do you anticipate, what is the anticipate date? I don't see it in here. If, if we, uh, were to approve, uh, this item.
Alexa.
Once it's approved, I, staff estimates it'll take probably three to four weeks working with the S B D C to finalize paperwork. And once it launches, if you will, probably five to six weeks after that is when funding would be able to be delivered. Um, based on the experience that S B D C is having with similar loan programs, they are almost instantly oversubscribed. So it, it won't take long, um, to be able to, you know, go through the businesses that apply and start getting the funding out there. It's, it's a pretty rapid process once it launches. The S B D C will provide quite a bit of outreach through their own very extensive network. They will hold online, um, training sessions on how to apply. So there is quite a bit of, um, preliminary effort that they will take on in order to educate businesses on how to apply.
Thanks for the answer and with that, I, I second the motion.
One last question, sorry.
Vice Mayor Ho, no, no, hold on a second. Vice Mayor Ho.
Okay, like I said, I have something to say.
Sorry about that, sorry.
No problem. Okay, um, you know, eighteen, I, I believe, uh, to answer, uh, councilman Contreras, I, I believe, I asked staff about how long ago did we have this one point one set aside? And that was about eighteen months ago. Uh, we set it aside for the, um, the facade purpose. And yes, there are no takers. And so I really think this is a great, uh, way to repurpose this loan, especially when we're in need and of, um, you know, restart or jumpstart our economy, local economy again. And, um, I, and, and I do believe that we wanna stretch our dollar, yes. I, I, I think there's gonna be a lot of applicants because, um, you know, there's not enough PPP dollars to go around and people keep waiting and waiting and a lot of people have not received, um, their money and they're in need. And I believe this program, uh, is going to be different than the PPP program because it doesn't require, correct me if I'm wrong, Alexa, it does not require that you use it towards payroll, correct?
Correct.
Use it other like expenses or, um, operational use or whatever. Um, but it's not required like PPP where seventy-five percent is towards payroll, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And, um, the other thing is that I, 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 I'm just concerning, I'm, I wanna make sure people don't take advantage of, of the situation or, or this money or this program to, um, you know, cuz if we're offering a loan, you know, the tendency is to apply. So is there a minimum requirement in terms of like how long they've been in business? For, um, so I'm thinking, you know, if I were to, if, if somebody opened their business six months ago or, um, versus five years ago, it, you know, who's going to be, is a first comfort survey, wouldn't be fair. So I think we want to make sure, I know statistically, SBA statistics has been put out there, is that, um, you know, many companies, many businesses don't live beyond three to five years. So we, we really want to help those small businesses that are, that were thriving um, before, you know, COVID nineteen hit. And we want, our purpose is to help them get off their feet or restart, jumpstart, not for them to take advantage of this. Because we're trying, as council, uh, council members Contreras said earlier, is that we, we want to see if we can, you know, lower the amount. I mean, I'm fine with the way it's written. It's just that we wanna make sure, uh, it goes to the right people, the right, uh, for the right purpose, um, to help their, um, thriving business. And, and I, I don't know whether that be putting a, you know, a clause in there that, you know, it's gonna have to be, you know, how long should they be in business before they could apply? And, um, the other is that, I mean, I'd like to see that these people, uh, get some help. So I think, um, I know that the SBA has mentoring programs such as SCORE. So I believe that maybe there's a requirement for them to work with SCORE. I mean, that's free. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point.
Yeah, and you know, when I first started and I started my business years ago, thirty years ago, I, I looked up SCORE and you know, their, the mentors are, are, you know, exactly very.
Great.
It is a, a Fortune five hundred companies sometimes, you know, there mean a lot of times. And so I believe they are full of, um, information. They have a wealth of information. They have the know-how. And I believe that if people are going to ask for money, ask for help and we're giving them this generous program, I believe we need to, um, you know, they need to help themselves. They need to sign up for SCORE. They need to sign up for some kind of, I mean, government, uh, SBA uh, type of program to get, to get them, to give them ideas on how to, to get, uh, to get through and get, you know, and then jumpstart, um, their company. Because that's the whole purpose of this. So that's what I have to say before we, we vote and I, I know, I believe someone second already, so.
Yes, uh, I appreciate comment from Vice Mayor Ho before Alexa, I asked Alexa to respond to Vice Mayor Ho concerns, uh, in, in the staff report. I think that our staff did provide, you know, really detail of this business loan program and, and please, uh, keep in mind, this is not, uh, uh, give away funding. So the business, the, uh, the business had to pay back. And, you know, based on the staff report that I have in front of me, that business plan with three years of, uh, you know, uh, plan and, you know, statement of plan, use of fund and two years of corporate tax return, two years of personal tax return. So I think that there's a lot of detail that the business, uh, they need to, um, they need, they need to meet requirement before they, they going to be approved by, uh, by the program. Alexa, now, is anywhere that you can respond to Vice Mayor Ho concerns?
Yes, all, all of that is correct. There is an underwriting criteria, um, for the exact purposes that you're bringing up. We want to help businesses that, that are able to survive with just a little bit of assistance because of this pandemic. Um, so yes, there, there, there is an underwriting criteria, a lot of forms and paperwork and bank statements and, uh, tax returns. Credit scores will be run, all of, all of that is a part of the criteria. Um, there is not currently a requirement that they work with the, uh, SCORE or the S B D C also offers counseling. We can certainly include that.
You know what? The thing is, when you're saying that they, you require three years of tax return or whatever. Um, I mean, we, I mean, are you looking at, um, that they have money in the bank? Or they, are you looking at, um, whether they really are, you know, um, in the red before you loan? So I was just wondering what your criteria is, um, regarding that. Why are you asking for, for their, um, bank accounts and all that? You know, I think you should, but I'm just wondering, what's your criteria?
Yeah, the, the purpose is strictly to know that, um, they are, have a good chance of being able to repay the loan. I don't think most businesses are interested in taking on extra debt, um, you know, if they don't need to. But we are still working out, you know, some of those final pieces with the S B D C in terms of, um, certain requirements. So yes, we, we, we are. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I want you to finish.
Sorry, I didn't know if you were speaking and I was talking over you. Um, so yes. Sorry, I, I've lost my train of thought. We do want these businesses to be able to repay the loan. We do want them to show that they are financially viable and are not over their head already in debt to, to other lenders. We want to know that they are able to repay this loan. Um, there is a loan review committee. Um there is a loan review committee that gets put in place and with the SBDC's help. The idea is that those three of those people are going to have a lot of financial literacy to help make those judgment calls as to whether or not these businesses um are are a reasonable risk.
But so based on whose criteria? Would that be based on our criteria given to the SBDC? Or based on their set of criteria that they want us to use?
They have recommendations based on other loan programs that they administer. This is a regular service of theirs. We can make our own.
Now, here's the thing is that now, years ago, when I first started out, I can tell you that the FBA is known to, it's very difficult to get a loan from the SBA. They say that usually you get the loan when you have money. So but if you have money, why do you need a loan? You see what I'm saying? So I'd like to see, I mean, I want to make sure that we understand that these are um, you know, because of COVID nineteen, because they are um maybe their expense or their payments are in the rear, maybe that's why they're coming to us to get a loan. So um we have to make sure that we understand that this is not regular times when people are out there getting a a an SBA loan to to uh expand their business. You see? So most of the time, that's the, you know, SBA's criteria is, hey, are you a thriving business? If I'm a thriving business and if I'm doing so well in this economy, why do I need twenty thousand dollars? So I I I I'd like you to take a look at at that, because that, those are my experiences. And um I believe that this is a great idea, setting aside a hundred thousand dollars um to um uh to basically uh this is the one that uh you you mentioned at other business assistance. Uh could you explain a little more about that? The shop local campaign and how are you getting that out there?
It's something that we would like to put together. It is not put together at this point, but yes, there are a number of shop local campaigns. Um we have been researching what other cities are are doing, would primarily be kind of a um a social media driven campaign. We're also looking to put together uh an email blast to the businesses that we have in our database from our business licenses. We would like to put together a survey that goes out to them. Um just kind of a short survey monkey type of thing so that we can get a little feedback on where businesses are at, understanding, you know, where they are uh as it relates to the pandemic. Do they believe they're going to be reopening? You know, what what's the level of struggle? Um are have they been open this? Try to get some data so we really understand where our businesses are at and how we can support them. Um shop local campaigns are always a a good idea, and then also allowing our businesses to connect back with us on a larger, broader scale than we have recently. Um we want to be able to provide support to them. And we think that some of that could truly be as simple as, you know, walking out and providing them with signage for their window about social distancing or masks or whatever it may be as we walk through these reopening phases. But yeah, we we want to try to gather some data from the businesses first and then try to figure out how we can support them.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, are you done? Are you done?
I think Councilmember Do would like to speak, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Um now, this uh the Economic Development Funds uh have been set aside way before my time. So could you um explain why the money haven't gotten taken for the years? I love that elevator music.
Alexa.
I can give you what I believe to be true. Uh again, also, you know, we we have to experience um you know, the challenges of some staff turnover and and some of the knowledge base that went with them. So yes, there was a loan program that was put in place. The vision was to improve that area um with a multi-pronged approach. So it was not only for business loans, but additionally, um it was one of the founding principles behind the CPU, the Community Preservation Unit, that there would be a systematic approach, if you will, to looking at properties along, starting in West West Westminster Boulevard, looking at properties that needed improvement, and that was kind of a two-piece approach. So there's the code enforcement side for code violations, and then also just education for the property owners on what property maintenance standards are. Um there was a lot of discussion on kind of a broader vision, um putting together documents within the planning department about design standards, uh preferred colors, trying to make it easier for property owners to upgrade their property in sort of simple manners, um coats of paint, awning, you know, easy things. But also trying to create a little bit of uniformity along that along that corridor if possible. Um so all of those pieces really struggled to come together. When the CPU was made live, um we became very aware of the um illegally discarded items and uh how prevalent they were. And so the CPU was really directed into it glorified trash pickup um instead of kind of this property owner engagement that uh the idea had started with. Planning, um also equally overwhelmed with all kinds of mandates that came down from the state. So you know, some of those pieces were never able to be put together in terms of design guidelines, coloring, all those types of things. We wanted all these pieces to gel together. Now, we do know some people knew about the loans. Um I I do know that, yeah, you know, chat talked to a number of businesses and received phone calls and inquiries. Why one never went out the door? I can't give you a one hundred percent perfect answer, but I can tell you that all of these programs were designed to work in tandem with each other, and really things got waylaid and unable to gel.
Okay, well, thank you very much. But okay, so this particular um fun funding was set aside for the Bolsa Chica corridor areas, is that correct?
Westminster Boulevard.
Okay, so there there is other funding for different areas in the city. Is is that a fair statement?
No, that was, this funding was set aside only for that. Funding was not set aside for any other areas.
Okay, so there's a reason why the council award this particular area the funding in a couple of years, is that correct?
As a as a, but I believe as a part of kind of this block-by-block approach, that being a a target area.
Okay, I I just want to understand the history of the um of this particular fund that has not been used for the past couple of years, because there's a lot of concern in the uh come from the resident Westminster saying that the money was set aside, you know, to develop the uh the west side of the city, but it hasn't been used. And I just want to understand why that money is still sitting there after a couple of years. Okay, so I have a better understanding of that. Well, thank you very much. Um I I'll look at the uh staff report. And I mean, you know, all the council member and the mayor brought up a uh good questions. Um I'm badly concerned. Um so so the loan uh up to twenty-five thousand dollars to businesses that uh have a maximum twenty-five employees, is that a current employees, a past employees? Uh do we know? Do we have to have, we have staff, is this a secretary and that? I mean, you know, they used to have fifty now because of COVID nineteen, they shut everything down, okay? Can they have twenty-fives that qualify? I mean, you know, you don't have to answer uh every single question that I I throw out. So can we cut the the employees down to, say, if you have less than twelve point five employees, you can qualify for a ten thousand dollar loan. If you have like a six point one, two, but six point two five employees, you can qualify for a five thousand dollar loan. To make it fair, because I I love to have a a policy that's 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 clear-cut, so uh less um so that we have a guideline, so staff have a guideline to follow, and it's it's a, it will create a fair and equal um approach to the community so that we will stay away from being being accused of not being fair. You understand what I mean, right? Uh that's my my number one concern. Um we uh we uh prepare for collection in in after twelve months. Are we in the business of um collecting money if the uh payment going to default? Um and how are we gonna do that? Uh we're gonna run the credit checks, and we're gonna oh like a lien, and you know, put a lien on that particular business owner when they uh fail to make the payment. Um are we gonna have an audit um to make sure these people have a legitimate businesses and all that stuff? I mean, these these are, there's a lot of whole, I mean, concern. And I, you know, um I I think all of us, the the city council, the mayor, we all have a very concern about this. This is a great program. The the businesses need help, uh no doubt. Um and I look at the documentation. Now, business plan with two years of rejection, you cannot, I mean, uh that will eliminate a lot of businesses uh in in the city of Westminster. I don't think not too many businesses have a business plan. You know, I don't even know if business plan look like, well, I took a business class, I'm gonna try to do it. I I think I barely passed the um business plan um um course. It's a segment of plan, a youth fund. So you know, with all these requirement, do we have some um approach to you know, holding hands of the business owner, those who who have uh no understanding of these um what it means. I mean, you know, a lot of mom and pop businesses that we have in Westminster. And uh they have, they now they operate without business plan. These these are the uh, these are my concern. Uh I'd like to see a a clear-cut policy, you know, especially in talking about the loan amount, twenty thousand dollars up to twenty-five employees. You know, twelve point five employees are lasting and qualified for ten thousand dollar loan if you choose to. So uh let have a clear-cut policy so that that we uh we can operate um in transparency so that uh we stay away from being accused of uh uh not being transferred. That's all I have.
Alexa, would you like to respond to Councilmember Do concern?
Uh this loan program can be set up as you would like it. If you would like to stratosphy that, we can certainly do that. We can bring that back. Um we can certainly bring back and representative from the SBDC to discuss um some of the finer points of underwriting with you. But yeah, it it is your program. So if you would like to, you know, take any of these other approaches, we certainly can.
Let me leave that uh City Attorney, may I have a question for you that I'd like to approve this item tonight? And you know, if you know, uh Councilmember, you know, want to, one stop to come up with a few a few other detail, is that okay with that?
Yes, I mean, yes, you can give the, you can give authorization to proceed with the program and provide whatever guidance you feel is appropriate.
All right. So we uh we have the motion and a second on the floor unless
If if I could add one other thing, just before you vote on it, I, because I want to make sure this issue is covered. Um because it was raised during public comment, and it was also raised uh by another, but Jody Boyd and Terry Rains separately. Uh Jody Boyd in an email, uh and that was, they argued that the council couldn't vote on this, or at least some members of the council who have businesses, because these are small business loans. And uh I did respond in detail um to Jody Boyd on that very issue to explain that there are conflict of interest rules, that when you have a financial interest or a possible financial interest in something that does create a conflict, however, there's an exception. And the exception is when when the type of thing that you're voting on involves a, what they call a significant segment of the city. Um then you are allowed to participate, as long as your interest in that issue is no different than anybody else's that's part of that significant segment. So what's a significant segment? The the California Code of Regulations defines it as at least twenty-five percent of all businesses or nonprofits within the city. That's one of the definitions of a significant segment. This um almost all the businesses are small businesses, not all of them, but the vast majority, so at least ninety percent. So that's more than the twenty-five percent that's required. So that would constitute a significant segment of the city. And the council member's interest, if you have a small business, and I'm not sure which of you do, but whoever does, uh as long, you would have arguably the same opportunity to apply for one of these loans as anybody else would. And so therefore, your interest is no different than others. And so under the rule, that falls within the exception. It's called the public generally exception. That's what I responded. I want you to all be aware that I responded to this issue. Um so you are allowed to proceed on the on in voting on this. Uh that being said, you could choose to clarify that you're not gonna apply for these funds, to make it clear. Uh you know, that you're not intending that, um but that that's in your discretion. So I just wanted to make sure that's out there as well before you vote on this.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes, while we're on that subject, I did not, and I I do not have the intention to apply for this loan. I do have a small business in the city of Westminster, but I want to make a uh clear statement is that I do not have any intention of applying for this loan. But I I'd like to, um I don't know if we have a second, or did we have a motion on the floor?
I have a question.
We have the motion and a second on the floor. Yeah, correct.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Ho, oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll be right, yes, Sergio, before, I just have one more more thing to say is that I'd like to a substitute motion. Uh I just want to see if we could approve five point two. And um I'd like to put in a stipulation that they take the, you know, the uh uh or um have at least one session with SCORE, uh which is the SBA mentorship mentorship program. And also like to take a look at, to see if staff could um review the guidelines. SBDC guidelines and making sure that it is for the for this type of purpose and not for what usually the SBA is for, they usually give you uh um you know, you apply to um expand your business. And this is, I just want to be clear that this is not what it is for. So I don't want to use the same criteria as what is normally, um shall I say, expected those who follow or apply for an SBA loan to follow.
I second the motion, and I and I like to uh say publicly, I do not intend uh to apply this loan. I do not and never, never intend. All right.
Question, I still have a question.
I have a question.
Uh to Alexa, um the Small Business Center is going to administer the loan on the city's behalf. So they do have criteria and a process, a vetting process. And I I've noticed, you know, they talked about some of the criteria here um in terms of uh loan repayment and the number of businesses. I agree with what Councilwoman or Vice Mayor Ho mentioned earlier in regards to um the length of the business and how long it's been in business is a part of the criteria. I don't see that in here. I don't know if I missed it somewhere, but I don't see that criteria. I'm sure they have a stringent vetting process, and they will be following up again, admitting the loan and 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 chasing them down for any sort of malfeasance or any kind. Is that correct?
They they do have extensive experience. They will be administering the loan. Um two years in business is what's anticipated.
Anticipated or required?
Sorry, required.
The tax return, do you check the track?
The tax returns.
Yeah, I mean, I I like what what Councilwoman Ho mentioned earlier. I do, I'm really familiar with SCORE. SCORE does provide training and um guidance and counseling with some Fortune five hundred Fortune five hundred CEOs and volunteers from different companies. So I think that there is value in having that. I think we're, I think what we're missing here is the important, the reason why we put this item forward, I think, is to help some businesses that have been in the community that are helping thrive with, along with Westminster. Um so, you know, I I I I don't, I mean, I trust the small business administrator, uh you know, the the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make sure I get the name correct, the Small Business Development Center. I think they've had a practice of this loan program, so yeah, I trust that none of us here at City Hall or at on the council level will be able to influence anyone on that in that process. in that process. Is that correct?
Alexa.
Having problems, I'm muting. Um, yeah, I, that's, that's the vision I there, yeah, let me back up. The SBDC will be providing the administrative service of taking in documents, making sure that everything is there, making sure that the basic standards are met. There's five person review committee that then determines which businesses would be eligible. So, the idea is certainly that it wouldn't, you know, that, that those individuals would not be influenced, but I, I don't know how to answer that. Otherwise, we would be looking for, um, members of the community recommended by the SBDC that have financial literacy, that understand what they're doing, and that would be independent reviewers, but yeah.
I appreciate that. I think Alexa already answered. Councilmember Contreras concerns.
I have questions.
Please.
Um, Alexa, so the money had to be repaid. What wants is repaid. Who is going to receive that money? The city? They go back to the general fund or how does that work?
General fund, I believe, right? Alexa?
It is the city's money. It will be returned to us.
Can I just say that is not general fund money? That is economic development fund money? So we go back into the economic development fund.
Okay.
Okay. So had to set aside and spend on according to the guideline of that particular funds, is that correct?
Uh, uh, to the extent that the council sets parameters on the economic development fund, yes.
Yes, yeah, that money is coming from economic development.
Yeah, it's, it's not federal funds, so it's, it's the council's.
General fund. It's recovered from, from what I understand and what I remember is recovered from redevelopment, from properties that we sold in the past that is only supposed to be used for economic development. We can't move it around and, and pay for, you know, special projects. That's my understanding that are related. I mean, that are not, that don't go beyond the economic development fund purpose.
Okay, one, 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 one more questions and we can, uh, we can continue. Um, you know, I look, I look at the, uh, the requirement for this particular loan. I know there's a lot of businesses, so, you know, who, uh, who need a little boost to, uh, to survive this, uh, pandemic. Um, can we, uh, can the city staff work with the Chamber of Commerce, um, to help them, uh, to help the businesses owner who uh, not capable of produce these, uh, ticket documents, uh, due to knowledge or language problem? Can we work with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and facilitate a process for the, um, the, uh, business owner in our city?
Um, I am, if I may speak, um, I am the council liaison for the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and, and I, I believe number one is I don't think that is something that they um, could, uh, do at this time. And, um, I, I, I know that during COVID time, they're, they don't, they're not even meeting. And when they do meet, they, they really, I, I just have not, I haven't, I don't, I want to make sure I'm saying this, uh, in a nice way and that. Um, I don't, I don't see that they have established anything that could help in this regard. So, um, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce, that is, um.
So they're not capable of, uh, helping our business owner in the city? Is that what you're saying?
Um, they're not really set up for that. They don't have staff. They don't have, um, they don't really, uh, open their doors on a daily basis. Um, so I don't think they're, they're really set up right now, maybe in the future, but not right now. Yeah.
All right. Is there any other question or concerns? Okay. With that, we have, we have the substitute motion made by Vice Mayor Ho and second by me.
Yes.
So, let me clarify before we vote. Okay, so we, we approved this particular item with the stipulation that the staff and bring back with the detail. Take a deep breath, Christine. Uh, detail, um, policy regarding, uh, how we're going to dispense these, uh, monies, is that correct? The staff are going to come back with another, uh.
I don't think that's in the, in the motion, right? Vice Mayor Ho?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's what I believe. Yeah.
Okay, so we, we, we're going to vote for this and the staff are going to use this particular guideline, very vague, very broad, uses to, um, dispense the economic developing fund. Is, is, is that, is that, uh, is that the understanding? I just want to un- understand what my voting for.
Uh, Vice Mayor Ho, would you please, uh, repeat your motion again?
Okay. I, um, would like to approve item five point two. Uh, and we, I would like to also add that the applicants um, or whoever receives this fund uh, would be required to attend, um, SCORE as SBA mentorship program. Um, and I'd like to, I'd like staff to work with SBDC, which is the Small Business Development Center, to make sure that their business development program, uh, I mean, their, their, uh, their criteria is, um, I mean, because they do have very strict guidelines, so we don't need to reinvent. But we want to make sure that it is applicable for these applicants who are not applying for the loan to, um, expand their business. But it is to, um, to help them in this tough economic time. So I'm gonna, I'd like to leave that to staff to determine. We don't need to read SBDC does.
Yeah, I think that, uh, Vice Mayor Ho explained really well, we're clear. So, uh, can, uh, I, I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay, so on that substitute motion, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the substitute, or I'm sorry, the, that motion carried five to zero on the substitute motion.
All right. Thank you for that. Next item, five point three, discussion regarding the possible hiring of economic development consultant. Uh, I, I propose this item, uh, for our city council consideration because I truly believe that, uh, our city staff, they are professional, they are expert for uh, what they've been doing. However, they, they have been overwhelmed with many project in the city. So my intention for this item that I want to bring in an expert, economic development expert who could able to help our city council, who could able to, uh, help our city staff, provide us with a real, uh, direction, especially to help, uh, for our city because, you know, soon now we go to reopen our city. So we need an expert, economic development expert, uh, to help us to recover and, uh, to help us with many, uh, future projects. So I hope, I hope to have support from, from our city council. So I'd like to move.
I'll second that. Um, I did ask just to make sure that the, we do go out and find a professional, someone with experience and, um, I do know that Alexa needs support. But I do want to make sure that we have a fair process, transparent process so that it's open and, and we're able to vet candidates, not sort of default to whatever, whoever applied. So I do hope it's a competitive process.
I'd like to say some.
Vice Mayor Ho, please.
Yes. I, I would like, I mean, I really think that's a great idea to look for someone who could be in charge of economic development and it be a, we don't need to hire anybody on, um, as an employee. Um, I believe we, I know that, I mean, it's such a big job and, I mean, Alexa has been filling in and and, and, and prior to Chet's departure, I mean, Chet was wearing all kinds of hats. And, um, I, I mean, I want to look for someone who could make a, a, a lateral move versus someone who's going to come in here and, and do all kinds of things. So, I mean, I, I really believe that we, we do need to vet through and make sure that our, um, candidate is capable of helping because this is a very big job that, um, to deal with the, uh, Westminster, um, uh, mall. And, uh, I, I mean, there are so many different things they have to deal with. Um, and I can't imagine it be someone who's never had the experience in dealing with these issues, such as, you know, the politics involved and that we've got the seven, um, owners and then we've got the community, you know, uh, and so I, I, I think, like I said, I, I want someone who's, who could make that, who's been there, done that. So we don't want this person to get on a learning curve and come on board and take time to learn. So I, I, I do, I do believe this is necessary. So I, um, I am all for item five point three. Uh, I don't know if anybody second, but I'd like to second that.
I appreciate Vice Mayor Ho, uh, comment. Really appreciate that. So we, we have the motion and the second on the floor. City clerk, I'd like to call for a vote.
I have a couple of questions, please.
Yes, Councilmember Doe.
Um, okay, so this, uh, particular item just authorized city staff to look for a possible consultant. Is that, is that, uh, is that why I'm, I understand? Is that what my understanding is?
Correct.
Can we wait until that we find a permanent city manager? Uh, so that whoever that might be can work closely with the consultant so that they can basically have the same direction? Can we focus on getting a city manager first before we start, uh, hiring a consultant? Because whoever that we're going to hire, it's going to have to work with the new city manager, whoever it might be, and share, maybe somebody else. Uh, we don't know. So can we just, uh, I'm, I'm okay with this. But can we wait until we get this a permanent city manager? And, uh, before we hire consultants so that, uh, so that they can work closely together, um, as a team instead of two different individual?
Councilmember Doe, I, uh, yeah, I, uh, I understand your concern.
I have, uh, I have commented on that.
Yes. Councilmember Nguyen, yes.
Yes, I, I, I know at the time that, uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear?
Hear you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I, I know that, um, when, um, our assistant manager, uh, Jess Simon here, yeah, he, he, he worked, he works, uh, day and night on, on these issues and to get us, uh, moving. And I know that there, there's a lot of work, uh, involved and, and especially with the, with, uh, a lot of projects going on, like the project of you and other projects are, are, are ongoing right now. And I think that this is, we, you know, waiting to get the city managers onboard, it will take us some time. And then by that time, we probably, you know, behind, uh, the, you know, we already behind for, for a few months because of, uh, COVID nineteen and also, uh, because of departure of our assistant manager. And I would think that it's better to get someone here as soon as possible so that we, they can, and I agree with, uh, Vice Mayor that we need to get someone who experienced, who have, uh, you know, uh, experience in this so that they don't, there is no time for learning curve here. So I, um, I, 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 I agreed to, um, to the motion.
All right. Uh, because, you know, we, we hire a consultant right now and that particular consultant doesn't work well with, uh, with the new city manager. Well, you're going to talk about Jess Simon and, uh, Eddie Manthrow, they, they are a team. They work, uh, closely together. Uh, so, you know, like right now we hire a consultant and then that consultant, you know, you, you, we all understand about personality. Uh, you know, the, those that we want right now might not be able to work well with a city manager. It's kind of just a waste of time and money. Just let's wait until we hire a, a city manager and then let's, let's buy a consultant. Where, you know, who can work well with the new city manager so that we don't waste time and money and resources. Yeah, I totally understand. Sir.
Let me say this, is that the person for, because we know there's a lot of things that, I mean, there's been a, a lag time between the time Chet left, uh, and, and now I'd say about three months, four months. And we have, you know, Westminster Mall project that was being handled by, by Chet. And the person who's the con- the consultant being hired or to be hired for economic development would be focusing on the project as the main, his main job or her main job. And it would not, he would not be working with the manager and being like an assistant manager or anything like that. So I hear what you're saying, Councilman Doe, and I think that, uh, my, my answer is that this person is really on economic development and working with this project as, I mean, I see that to be the main project and this person would be a consultant for that and would be something part-time, would not be full-time and would not be an assistant manager to be, to have to work, you know, with the manager.
So this, this, uh, so, so, let me understand your logic. Okay, so you, you telling me and you telling the council that this particular person worked independently with the Westminster Mall? And he, uh, who, who is the boss of this particular consultant? Does he have to answer to someone? Uh, if not the city manager, but, uh, is he working for, for the city council or is he working for the city?
Well, yeah, but he's not, he's really not, you know, he's the, the city manager is not one who's the economic development, uh, expert. So I would, I mean, I'm saying that just because we don't have a permanent city manager, it shouldn't delay all of our plans to, uh, uh, to work with, um, yeah, developing the mall, which is kind of like we're in the middle of that. And so we don't want to be leaving another, you know, we've already left hanging for about four months now. So we need to fill in that gap and we needed ASAP. And, and we may not be able to find someone right away. So we, we want to make sure the, the process gets vetted and this hiring process is well vetted. So I believe that we, we don't have anybody to present.
I'm not, I'm not this, uh, I'm not disagreeing with you. Okay, I understand it's a, it's a, it's a great idea. But what I'm saying is we need to get the new, whoever, the new city manager has to get involved with the hiring process of the particular consultant so that they can work well together because that, that, that consultant has to answer the city manager. Okay, if, if you're saying that they, he, uh, he or she will not have to answer the city manager, that's, that's not right, it's wrong. So, what I'm saying, let, let it wait until, well, we can start the process, but the decision has to wait until we have a new city manager, whoever that might be. That's it. That's all I'm saying.
All right, so, uh, Councilmember Doe, I, I heard what you were saying, but I disagree with that, uh, because, you know, we're going to open the city pretty soon and we hire a consultant like Vice Mayor Ho mentioned earlier. We not hiring a full-time staff. We hire a consultant. So, uh, I think that Vice Mayor Ho or Councilmember Nguyen, or Councilmember Contreras, they already explained and, you know, I don't want to repeat, but I mean, like, my intention that we need economic development expert to help our city council to provide us, uh, for many different future uh, project or for my other project that we are, uh, dealing with. So I think that we need an expert, we need to bring onboard an expert who could help us right away because we're going to. Because we're going to open our city pretty soon and you know, uh, on agenda tonight, we have two other item. That we uh, we want to support the business community. So I think this item go along with many uh, with uh, a few other items. And that is my intention uh, to propose this item, so we need the person. Pretty soon, and I think that for the city manager, I think that equal to take more time for us. To hire a full-time city manager, so I like to, I like to call for a vote. We already have a motion on the second floor.
Okay, and just to clarify, that was a motion by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho, and that's to. Uh, direct uh, direct staff to pursue um, potential consultants for hiring of an economic development consultant. That correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I just wanna add that uh, you know, before I voted on this item that, you know, I understand the urgency of um. Hiring someone, it's, I think it's, I think it's, the staff needs support, this person is only a consultant, they're not a staff member and, and consultants from my understanding, make recommendations. Ultimately, the city manager, management, City Hall will make, have the final decision, and I think the big decisions, I think the council will still be. Will have that opportunity to weigh in. Um, I only ask and I'm voting for this item in support with just the understanding that it's gonna be an open and fair process. And that we hire the most qualified person through a competitive process versus some hack. You know, I don't wanna hire a hack or someone's giveaway from some city that. Were either terminated or, or, or shushed away and we inherit more problems, so. I, I do hope that it's a fair, open, competitive process and we hire the most qualified consultant. To help us deal with probably one of the most biggest projects RC is gonna have for years to come, so my, I'll go with an I, yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you, next we have listed later items, six point one, resolution reaffirming proclamation twenty twenty. Plus one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declare the existence of a local emergency.
Six point one.
Second.
Alright, so that's a motion by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster. Reaffirming proclamation twenty 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 dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Hey, and that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next we have common and we pass.
Mayor Ta, we have a walk-on item.
We have a walk-on items, six point two, okay?
So um, thank you, um, the staff report basically lists what are the intention. Um, this item came forward because I know that we, that essential businesses are required to have their employees wear face coverings. And I've been approached um, by a number of senior citizens that also work at essential businesses. That are wearing face coverings and they're concerned about people who walk in to the business that are not wearing face covering. And as we continue to slowly open, hopefully with the uniformity, that. Um, we continue protecting our residents and cut through the noise and confusion regarding face coverings, I think. Um, it's important that if employees are required to wear face coverings inside businesses, I think it's important that. Um, that clients or, or, or customers do the same. Um, in best interest of both the customer and the patron, and so. I just, again, think it's extremely important that we create a unified voice and require face coverings when visiting businesses, again. There are a number of businesses that are starting to open up, some with or without our permission unfortunately. And we're not in any way encouraging that, but the very least we could say, hey, you must wear a face covering. Um, when visiting this into business to protect, again, the patrons and, and also the, the, the employees.
Uh, que- questions, uh, Councilmember Contra, are you um? Is this like a requirement, is there any enforcement uh, aspect of it or it's just a, a? Pretty much a, or visal or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand, I mean, I don't want, you know, police officers to walk around issuing tickets or anything like that, that's not what this is about. This is just really about us uh, reemphasizing the importance of. Our commitment to ensure the safety of all residents. And at least a unified voice, again, there's so many mixed messages from the county, from the state. And so this is from us, to the city, for our residents, as far as our residents are concerned. That we require them to wear face coverings as much as the employees for their safety, nothing else. And again, I'm not asking that there'll be enforcement and policing of this. I think that people will catch on and I think, um, I think, I don't see it being a mass, uh, an issue, I don't.
Yes. Yeah, well, hold on a second, I'd like to speak from my experience, you know, I, I walk every time I walk into the supermarket, you know. You know, in the west side, the east side, I see the majority, you know, people who walk into the supermarket or any essential. Businesses, majority of the people, they are wearing masks. So I mean, I understand Councilmember Contreras concerns, but I'm not really sure that if we come up with any ordinance or whatever resolution, we cannot enforce, so what's the point? Uh, Member Wen?
Yes, just clarification for this one, um, I know that the executive order, I believe it's number three came out. And we required uh, the essential business uh, open with the employee, four, four or more employees have to wear the mask. At the same time, we also said, recommended that, that, you know, everybody wear, wear masks when they are having outside activities. Now, if we, we already said that in that EO uh, executive order. Now, if, I don't know if you want to come out with another executive order or another um, ordinance saying that you must. Wear everybody inside, I mean, uh, uh, doing um, outside work activities have to wear masks. Uh, my, my tendency is, well, you know, I, I was thinking if we're, if we were doing this like um. Couple months ago or, or, or a month ago, I think it makes sense, uh, at this point, I am. Kind of concerned because we have a lot of contro- controversial um, going on that people don't uh. Don't want to wa- wear masks, uh, for example, you know, we have a couple weeks ago or last week or the week before, we have. Number of people uh, uh, protest at the uh, Huntington Beach pier, uh, or Huntington Beach. You know, and if we come out with this one at this point. I afraid that there will be um, uh, uh, resistance uh, against, and I don't know if we make. The um, the shop owner or the, or, or, you know, uh, the people who handle uh, at the business. Uh, reject the people with, you know, when they come in without the mask or, or what, 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 what are we trying to do? And if we don't enforce them, then it's the same thing that we do as the recommended already.
So just for clarification, I'm not asking for anyone to wear a mask out in the field or out in, you know, out, out in the open, I'm referring to. Basically supporting the county's mandate that requires all um, businesses and. Um, when interacting with the public to wear face covering, that's what I'm referring to. If businesses are required to wear those face coverings, then I think. Customers should do, should wear those face coverings, I, I too have walked around and gone to different parts of the city. Visit stores and there are some people that just don't wear it, there's some that do for the most part and some that don't. And so what I'm trying to do is, I'm really concerned for me, for anything, is that our senior population, our seniors also work. And I think they're also concerned when people walk in and they're not wearing face coverings and they are. I just think what we can do to mitigate some of that pain and to help, you know, again, be consistent, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that, it's just that I'm afraid that there are, you know, more of controversial going on right now, it's uh, uh, you know, a lot of people against. Wearing masks and, and, and at this time, uh, not before, but this time. Uh, also they want to re, you know, business reopen and, and, and you just mentioned about, you know, you want to um. To follow the county, uh, may I ask uh, uh, the city manager, uh. Based on conversation that I have with you before, uh. Is it county requires that, uh, you know, everyone have to wear masks when they go into the business or, or, or is that? Is that somewhere that you can, uh, you can show to us?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember, um, Wen, yes, the county's ordinance or rules are the same as ours currently and that. An essential business or a business that is open, their employees um, must wear masks and, or face coverings. And they, like ours, strongly um, suggest or require that they're, or suggest that their. Patrons also wear face coverings, it is not required at this time that the patrons wear it, just strongly suggested.
So I want to thanks, our city manager already explained that we already have in our executive order before, so I mean like. What is the point, if we, we, if we come up something and we cannot enforce and it's already there, Vice Mayor Ho?
So Councilman um, Contreras, I mean, how, what did you, I'm sorry, could you repeat what you want us to, to do?
What I, what I'm trying to do is, is protect our residents, especially seniors.
I know, but I'm saying.
So right now, some, so, let me explain, sorry, so what, what I'm trying to do is, right now the county. Put out a mandate requiring um, businesses that interact with the public to wear face coverings. What I'm saying is to require uh, patrons or customers to also do the same. If you're going to a store, you're in fake Target or a grocery store that you also wear a face covering. For the safety, your safety and the safety of the employees, that's what I'm asking, and I'm asking for an executive order and not asking for anything else. Not asking for face coverings at parks, I just wanna be specific to businesses, you know, businesses are opening.
I, I, I'm sorry, um, the manager said, city managers just said that the county, if you want to echo counties. Um, recommendation and they're recommending, they're not forcing, they're not making it imperative. That people wear mask, uh, I mean, of course, patron, uh, patrons, I'm talking about patrons. So are you, are, are you saying that you want, you would like them to? To be, be required?
Yeah, I'm asking them to be required to wear the face covering, if you're visiting a, a, a central, a business. You're going to visit whatever business that may be and you're around the public, other people. You know, that you wear a face covering, again, if once you leave the business, what you do with your face covering is up to you. But I think to protect our businesses and, and employees and our residents, that I think we should have a requirement that they wear a face covering.
I mean, like, I understand Councilmember Contreras uh, concerns, however, if you mentioned about requirement. And if that is a city requirement and we cannot enforce, so what is the point? So I mean, like, if we come up with something that we require the business to require the customer that everyone to walk in the business and to wear mask, so that's me that if they did not. If they didn't do it, so either the business have to invite them out or our police or they call the police and, you know, we have to. Uh, so our police uh, have to intervene or something, I mean, I, I see no point. If we come up with something that require the customer to enter the business. Uh, with a mask and, you know, we cannot enforce.
I mean, I mean, right now, bu- businesses are not supposed to open, there's certain business should not be opening and they're opening anyway. I mean, we can't, I mean, we can't enforce that either in some cases, so. I mean, what I'm trying to do is, again, essential businesses are already required to wear face covering for the cus- for the actual employee. I'm asking that the residents do the same, that we man, that we require them to wear. If you're a customer, you're going to rest, you're going to a restaurant, you're going to a store, you do the same thing. Again, I'm, I'm looking for senior, look out for seniors who also work and they're also just as concerned.
Go, go ahead, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Doe.
Um, yeah, I, I can understand Councilman Contreras' concern because he were talking about. The senior citizen who is uh, at a higher risk of contracting the coronavirus. So, you know, they, they have a valid concern when everybody's, uh, you know, you, you, you're right, I mean, everywhere you go, most of the supermarket. Or even home, you know, Home Depot, Walmart, I mean, everybody uh, wearing mask, but some don't and uh. Um, you know, we, and, and we, we have a duty to protect our senior citizen. Uh, I have a question for the chief of police, Chief, is he here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, um. You uh, could you explain to the council, um, you, the role, the, the PD in term of uh, uh, social. Gathering and face mask and all that stuff, how, how is our, our police department deal with the? With the, uh, this situation to protect everybody without making any risk?
Well, we're in line with the rest of the police departments throughout Orange County and, and within Southern California with um, the efforts that we put forth in um. Getting compliance through education, uh, so far we haven't, uh, fortunately haven't issued. Uh, citations for this because people have been pretty cooperative in understanding what's going on. And when they come out and get contacted by our officers, um, they're complying and they're understanding. In, in relation to the, the businesses and stuff that are opening. Uh, our code enforcement officers have been going out, they've been passing out um, the literature that we've created. To inform the business owners, what's an essential business, if you are an essential business, what you should be doing with face masks and face coverings and the social distancing and stuff. So we've actually been getting a lot of cooperation from the community. Uh, I know in some cities, uh, like Huntington Beach and, and others, Seal Beach and the, the coastal cities that had to deal with the closure of the beach and the protesters coming down. You know, that's always gonna be a um. A chance you take when you, when you do something that, you know, members of the community don't like, they have, they have the right to, to um. To protest and, and have their voices heard and, and, you know, fortunately, we haven't had any of that in Westminster. Um, and hopefully we don't, but uh, you know, like I said. A long answer uh, to your question is, uh, we've been very lucky that we've had a lot of great compliance with the community. And uh, the message that council and the rest of the city has been giving out through social media and through. Uh, the Zoom council meetings on, on what's expected of our community and, and they've been complying very well.
I really want to thanks.
I think what I'd like to do is maybe I'd just table this item for the next meeting, um. Clearly, it sounds like there's more questions in terms of how we move this forward. But to me, it's about the interest of the public and public safety and, and doing what we can to. Continue reducing risk for our community, so I'll just go ahead and, and just table this item for now and, and maybe consider bringing it back.
You know, may, may, may I continue my comment? You know, I, I think, I think as, as a council, because, you know, we, uh, Councilman Contreras has been approached by. Uh, senior citizen who are um, at risk, how are the, at risk group that most likely contract with coronavirus for the city. And music system is known to be weak, um. You know, we, we, as, as a council, we can uh, have a, a resolution in support of uh, of the resident wearing mask uh, um. Around the, uh, our senior, senior citizen resident, uh, it's a resolution, there's no enforcement. And you, now, we, we have come up with a lot of resolution, there's no enforcement in that, so. And so, you know, with a resolution as a group, uh, as a, as a city council to protect our vulnerable uh, resident, I, I don't, I don't think it's a. I think it's a valid concern, I mean, there's no, there's no enforcement, I mean, our, our police department that's actively going out there and, and uh. And conducting public relations uh, but through education to. and conducting public relations uh but through education to um to keep complying without making resort to uh uh enforcement. And as as a council group, I I don't see the reason why we can come up with a have a resolution in support of the resident wearing masks uh in uh within the vicinity of uh um our senior's residence.
I I think.
I think that I think that, you know, that we already have that in the in the past executive order or the resolution came from our city manager. Uh, okay, Vice Mayor Ho?
Yeah, I I mean, I would suggest that we recommend that um businesses adopt um um a policy for the customers or the patrons as well as employees to wear masks. That to me is a very good, um, shall I say, um, policy for 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 everyone.
That's already in play.
That, if that's already in place, and I think that, you know, every, for me, I think, I mean, as I'm reflecting, thinking as you are speaking, I'm thinking, I've seen places like Costco where they put a sign, it's in May fourth. I seem to even remember the date that every patron needs to have a mask on when they walk in. And I think that it needs to just be left to the individual business um to, we we should recommend the businesses required or we recommend that they require the customers to wear masks. But I don't think we want to um force them. We don't want to, because we can't enforce and we we, you know, and therefore we should not force them to do it. But I think that.
Well, 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 two things, two things that I have for uh uh, so so you can trust. Number one, uh, the EO, um, the executive order, number three, I remember specifically said that, you know, they recommend uh the business to uh to wear. At the same time, they they rec, oh, they 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 require um employees to wear. At the same time, they recommend people, the customer come in to wear the mask. Now, uh, it's up to that business, if if the senior, uh, the elderly that uh mentioned it to you, if she happened to work there, then, you know, that business can also put a sign outside that everyone who ever want to come in to uh do this business must wear masks to to come in. Well, that's their their discretion. Number two, um, I believe that the the executive order, uh, number three, also mentioned that um the business can open for those uh elderly wants to uh do business with the that business, particular business. Then they do also, uh, we also recommend that they have a different hour for the the elderly to 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 shop or to do business with that particular. So I leave it up to them to do it.
Well, again, I I just like to table my items to the next meeting and then I'll come back, whether I want to bring it forward or not.
All right. So, thank you. So next we have common and request for a channel item for city council agency member, including AB, one, two, three, four. We, when required.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I get clarification? Because uh, Councilman Contreras uh wanted to bring the item back. So I just want to make sure that's out there as a do you want to vote on that or is that coming back at the next meeting? Just to get clarity for staff, so we know what we're supposed to do.
Well, once I discuss the staff, then I'll make that decision, but I just wanted the option to bring everybody back if need so. But I like to talk a little bit, a little more with the city manager in terms of all right, other options there might be.
All right. So, uh, who would like to go first?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank city staff uh for your hard work, uh, you know, doing this uh pandemic, taking care of our city, um, keep the city open and serve our residents. Uh, thank you for our interim city manager, who worked very hard, tried to reach out to uh all the city council member uh with the daily update of uh what's going on in the city. I appreciate that. And uh, I would like to put on the agenda for next uh next meeting, um, a a ruse, the resolution from the city council uh demanding the governor to uh retract his comments and apologize for the comment he made regarding the uh first coronavirus that was originated from a nail salon. And knowing that, you know, eighty percent of all the nail salon owner in the states is owned by Japanese American.
All right, I second that request.
That was a motion from um Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta to add our item to the next agenda regarding a resolution demanding that the governor retract his comments uh that the coronavirus was generated from, was first generated from nail salon. Um, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, so who would be second?
I can go for that. Uh, same with uh, uh, Councilmember Doe. Um, you know, we uh, we know that during the COVID nineteen uh pandemic, uh, I know that our staff working really hard and I would like to take this opportunity to thank you each and every one of you um doing great job for the city and keep us uh in line with uh what's going on. So um, I'll have go go out to you. Oh, um, and um, I don't have anything today. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, so who would be the third speaker?
Me?
All right, Vice Mayor Ho.
Yeah. Well, I I'd like to thank uh the um our city, the interim city manager for keeping the communications line open. It's really important. And sometimes, um, you know, we think we don't have anything to say, but we end up, you know, end up taking a whole hour of her time. Sometimes, you know, half an hour to an hour. So I really appreciate that. And I really think with all the extra duties and you came on at a very, very tough time uh during this pandemic um situation, you you seem to be really keeping your cool and 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 doing really a great job. So for that, I thank you. And um, I I really don't have anything uh to agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ho and Councilmember Contreras.
Are you done? No. Okay, so I I, this is not an item for action. This is just a request. Um, I haven't seen the mayor in a while. So I'd just like to request a proclamation. Uh, you know, the many, there are many students and graduations and promotional ceremonies that have been postponed and canceled and and gone and and gone to virtual because of the coronavirus and, uh, you know, under the stay at home or the limits large gatherings. So I'd like this to come together and and request you to put together a resolution on behalf of the mayor and the city council to um to support the students who work so hard uh and to graduate and their families and to uh provide a proclamation declaring um that June sixth, which is the most around the time where many students graduate um in in the city and high school or and also students that live in our city, maybe college. Just supporting them as graduate graduate day, uh, class of twenty twenty. And uh, just a resolution from the mayor and city council. So if you can please provide that for us, it'd be great. And then also ask the city manager to see if there's anything she can do to maybe in the marquee to add like congratulations, class of twenty twenty to our graduates. Nothing that really costs money. I know we have free airspace on Channel Three and um and different places. So again, it's a proclamation, not a resolution, just to be clear. It's a proclamation, which, as you know, you write those all the time, along with certificates. So I'm asking for the same thing to support our graduates on behalf of the mayor and city council.
Yes, that is a really good idea. I appreciate that idea from Councilmember Contreras. So I'm going to have the proclamation uh and send up to uh Westminster High School and La Quinta High School. Are you okay with that?
Yes, and and again, uh, to add to that is to make sure that the city um looks for ways to recognize our graduates, either through through our marquees or through any free space that we get to advertise again, congratulating our local graduates and.
Yeah, so and we're going to feature the proclamation on our city website and our and our TV channel and our Facebook.
So hopefully we'll work together and making sure that the schools get that proclamation.
All right, I will do that on behalf of city council, as my honor. Yeah. Anything else from any uh, any other council member? Okay, so I uh, I have to thanks all the council member for your time. I know that you all have a busy time and really want to thanks our city staff for working really hard. I really want to uh thanks our interim city manager. I think that we all receive and daily email from our our city manager. And I mean, like, every time I read her email, I know that our city manager and our department head, they work really, really hard with uh all of city staff in it to come up with all the detail that our city manager mentioned in the email. I really, really appreciate everything our city staff be doing. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, May twenty seven, twenty twenty as seven P M. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.